Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, September 16, 2013 meeting of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen. I invite you all to rise and join the board as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Some procedural announcements before we begin this evening. If you have a cellphone or some other electronic device that might randomly and spontaneously make noise, we ask that you turn them off or silence them for the duration of your time with us. Please refrain from private conversations here in the room or immediately outside the room because it can interrupt the proceedings. If you choose to speak tonight, and there will be opportunities for public comment this evening, there is a speaker's policy. There are extra copies over here. There's a small counter to the right, to your left. Please adhere to the speaker's policy. Wait to be recognized by the chair. When you are recognized, the microphone here in the center aisle, please use that. Identify yourself for the record. We may know who you are, but that doesn't mean that the audience or our recording secretary does. And please direct all your comments through the chair. Do not engage in conversations with the audience or directly with the board or presenters. If you decide to leave before our meeting is concluded, please remember that our meeting is not yet concluded, and we ask that you leave the room quietly. If you would like to record the meeting, audio is allowed. You simply need to identify yourself for the record. Video, you will need to ask for permission from the board. At this time, is there anyone who wishes to record the meeting? All right. We have a proclamation this evening.
Good evening. Community Preparedness Month, September 2013. Whereas the Community Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for every resident of the town of Falmouth to prepare their homes, family businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, including natural disasters and potential terrorist attacks. And whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, businesses, and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our community and in our nation. And whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency READY Campaign, Citizens Corps, and other federal, state, local, territorial, private, and volunteer agencies are working to increase public activities in preparing for emergencies and to educate individuals on how to take action. And whereas, emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen of the town of Falmouth, and all citizens are used to make preparedness a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families, and community are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas, all citizens of the town of Falmouth are encouraged to participate in citizen preparedness activities and ask to review the READY campaign at their website at ready.gov or listo.gov in Spanish and become more prepared. Therefore, be it resolved that the town of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen hereby proclaim September 2013 as Community Preparedness Month and encourages all citizens and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together toward creating a more prepared society, dated the 16th day of September 2013 by the Town of Falmouth Board of Selectmen.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any objections? It's unanimous. A couple of announcements that I would like to make. First of all, I would like to thank FC-TV for the efforts they made to make sure that this meeting is recorded and, more importantly, televised. So this is live this evening, which is a first for us. The last time we met here, it was recorded and replayed. Also, as many of you know, the board has been meeting every other week, and in order to assure the public of some consistency, during our retreat this past weekend, the board agreed that we would meet the first and third Mondays of every month going forward. And there may be other meetings as needed for workshops or budget meetings or whatnot. Those will be announced well enough in advance that the public can know of them and be prepared for them. But for scheduling purposes, the first and third Monday of every month. And because of that also, we'd like to remind everyone that if you have an application that requires permission or approval from the board, please make sure that you plan well enough in advance and you get that to us, to the office, well enough in advance. There is actually an agenda item that is not on tonight's agenda. Will be on the next meeting's agenda because some folks delayed in getting information to us, and we didn't have a full packet for tonight's meeting. So it's important that you get things to us in a timely fashion so that there's ample time for us to gather information. Oftentimes, there are departments that we need to get recommendations from, be it police, fire, DPW, et cetera. And if everything is not together in time, then you may miss your window of opportunity. So please be mindful of that. Are there any other announcements from the board or the town manager's office?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to acknowledge on behalf of the Board of Selectmen the passing of Bob Murray in this community. Bob was a longtime advocate of affordable housing and worked tirelessly to find affordable housing within this community and throughout the Cape. So he'll be sorely missed, and we will continue to see the fruits of his labor as the years go on. So I'd like to ask for a moment of silence, but I would also like the board to consider in foster naming one of the many properties in this community that he developed and look at the potential so that his name will be remembered in this community for years to come. So through you, Mr. Chair, if we can ask for a moment of silence, I'd be happy to do so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any other announcements? All right. With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which are the minutes of September 9. We have a public session and executive session.
I would move approval of the minutes of September 9, public session. Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Any objections? It's unanimous. And the executive session.
I would move approval of the minutes of the executive session, September 9, and not to release. Second.
All right, a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented for the September 9 executive session and not to release to the public at this time. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any objection? Unanimous. All right. And our summary of actions. For the board's edification, I've already notified some of you. Item number three is not yet complete, so we'll not be addressing that this evening. And item number two will be held. There are proposed motions that have been presented to everyone. So we have item number one.
Before we get going, Mr. Chairman, the effort of expediency, because we do have one-day liquor licenses on this, make a disclosure that I am the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. Thank you.
So noted. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Item number one, signed variants congregational church. Item number four, I'm number two as a whole. Number three, we're not addressing this evening. Item number four is a one-day liquor license, food truck festivals of New England, Barnstable County Fairgrounds, October 5, 2015, or 2013, excuse me.
I do have a question on that one.
Okay, so we'll hold that. Item number five. Hold that. Item number six, request for special event, Dream Cruise Car Show, Falmouth Chamber of Commerce, Shore Street Extension. This is a road closure, September 28, 2013. Item number seven, request for special event, eighth annual Lennon Fest at the British Beer Company Falmouth Heights Field, October 13, 2013. Hold. Hold. Okay. And now, item number eight, payment from the Beach Department donation account, M.R. Soars Company Incorporated, $522.20. All right, with that, I need a motion, please, to approve items number one, six, and seven.
Go move. Six and eight.
One, six, and eight, I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? It's unanimous. All right. Item number two was held. We have a motion here. If someone would like to enter this into the record unless there are any questions.
On behalf of you, Mr. Chairman, that the Board of Selectmen approve the proposed license agreement by and between the town and Woods Hole Martha's Vineyard and Nantucket Steamship Authority, SSA, for a bike path connector through SSA and Mass DOT property connecting the Shining Sea Bike Path and Palmer Avenue, subject to receipt of the following from the Steamship Authority. One, a fully executed copy of the Mass DOT SSA license. Two, written confirmation from Mass DOT that the proposed town SSA license is authorized by Mass DOT license. Number three, a design specifications construction plan satisfactory to the town engineer. And number four, a revised license plan, Exhibit A, satisfactory to town council. So make that as a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. All right, item number four was held. Mr. Jones?
Well, I have a question. I hope potentially the Board of Appeals, I think the chair is here. We also received information about which kind of events can occur according to the Board of Appeals at the Barnstable County, at the fairgrounds. And according to that list that we have received from them, this is not one that has been authorized, and it can only be authorized if they have permission from the Board of Appeals to go ahead and do so. And is that the, can we grant the liquor license with the condition that that actually is put forth, or am I reading the documentation correctly from the Board of Appeals?
Is the Chair of Board of Appeals available to answer any questions?
Good evening. Matt McNamara, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My recollection is this particular application, which comes before us every year. By right, they have agricultural activities, or those non-agricultural activities are approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's my recollection that this was administratively approved recently by the Board of Appeals.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Move approval of the one-day liquor license for food truck festivals in New England.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? It's unanimous. Mr. Murphy, you held number five.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, we approved a license for the Barnstable County Fairgrounds on the same day, which was the Craft Beer Festival on this same day. And after, I didn't believe, but after checking with the ABCC, you cannot authorize two one-day liquor licenses for the same property on the same date. So unfortunately, the applicant who is, could tag along to the one-day beer festival application, but you can't have two separate licenses. So there was an email from the Administrative Assistant, Diane Davidson, late this afternoon that explained that to the board.
And that is in the record.
And one of the ironies is, one of the things that the person asking for the liquor license argued as to why he should get it is because this event was going on there.
That's correct. So unfortunately.
All right. Well, in that case, there's no action to be taken because we can't.
But it's two different one-day liquor licenses, is that correct? And he was, was he only?
He was the first one in, but at the same address.
But only for one day or for both days?
That's a good question. I don't know if he had both days or one day.
Hmm. Was it on last week's?
Do we do, let's see, was it on last week's agenda? It may be right here in the minutes, actually. It's for the one-day liquor license for the 28th.
So we could approve this for the other date?
For the 29th?
The 29th, that's correct.
How does the board wish to proceed?
I make a motion to approve for September the 29th.
All right, motion and a second to approve for just the 29th of September. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. And let's see, item number seven was also held.
Mr. Chairman, along with their request, the British Beer Company for, was to use the field, and our Recreation Director Helen Kennedy has suggested that that's a soccer field and they need to keep it in proper condition. And it wouldn't be that way if the British Beer Company parked cars there. So I think we have to find a way to resolve that, either not approve it or work something out with both the Rec. Director and the British Beer Company. I'm sorry, everybody, I came down with some bug, so I'm like here in spirit, but I'm going to do my best. Go ahead.
So my suggestion, Mr. Chairman, would be that we approve the event and not approve the vehicles on the field, and they could make some other arrangements with either the DPW or something of that nature along the side of the street, or the town parking lot, or even the Casino Wharfs parking lot. So there are other opportunities, but not on the field itself.
I would second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. We have, in the past, though, approved this, and this is the eighth annual, so.
Not the cars.
Oh, not the cars. This is the first year they're doing automobiles, okay. All right. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? It's unanimous. And that concludes the summary of actions. I will be passing these down for the board's signatures. Next item on our agenda is to vote the articles and execute the warrant. This evening, we are simply voting to assemble the warrant. We will, at a future meeting, be hearing presentations from town departments and petitioners and assembling our recommendations. At this time, though, we're simply voting to establish the warrant. So I would need, I guess in the past, we've gone page by page. We'll continue that practice this evening. So a motion, please, to add the articles to the warrant for Page 1, Article 1 through Article 6.
I'll vote.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any position? Unanimous. Page 2, Articles 7 through 14.
Okay, I'd like, I'd like a discussion on Articles 12, 13 concerning the grade start and end of the salaries. Is it a percentage that is, that is added to the start? I mean, I don't understand how it's, why it's 1830 and then 2315. I don't know how we get to that point.
Certainly. Happy to address that. Basically, each one of the grades for a town position is assigned a start, and then they move through various steps until they hit the top of the range. And actually, this particular change is for both the positions in, the two positions, one in fire and one in police. The reason for this change is that the town, about two years ago, petitioned the state to remove these very confidential administrative assistant positions, the, really, the primary secretary to the police chief and the fire chief. We petitioned to remove those from the AFSMI union. We just recently received the approval that those should be removed, given the highly confidential nature of those positions, and we had to reassign them a new grade since they were no longer in the AFSMI contract and were suggesting grade 3A, which has that 2172 an hour start and 2835 per hour top end. And that lies within the area that our Personnel Director had surveyed for comparable positions for police and fire chiefs in other communities based on salary survey, as well as a survey and verification of duties of each of those positions. And they will be placed, given their existing hourly rates, they'll be placed within that existing range with a modest increase, certainly not a decrease, but a modest increase reflective of that. So that is what, how that would function moving forward.
Okay. Okay. I need an explanation for that. Thank you.
Certainly, you're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, Article 11, this is just grammatical. I should say we'll vote to amend and take the word "and."
Thank you.
So with that, with those, without change, I'll move the Articles 7 to 14.
We have a motion. We have a second. A motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. The next page is only Article 15.
May I comment on that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
If I may. There is a, an error in the way this was structured I wanted to point out for the board for your consideration. As you will note, these are all seasonal positions in the town's compensation schedule. They have not seen adjustments since the year 2000, given the recent vagaries of the economy. So this would be the first consideration we're able to give for adjustments in the hourly pay ranges for all these seasonal positions. One position in here is not seasonal and should therefore be deleted, and I'm so suggesting that's the sealer of weights and measures, which is a year-round position and should not appear. So I would ask if the board would consider appealing that, both from the addition and deletion sections of Article 15, because it is a mismatch and should not be in this section.
On a separate note, Mr. Chairman, I will abstain from this article, even the discussions on that, because of my other position in the committee.
Okay. Any?
Move Article 15.
As amended?
As with the deletion of the seasonal rates and measures.
Motion and a second to add Article 15 to the warrant. With those changes, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. And one abstention. All right, and then we have to move on a couple of pages. There's Articles 16 and 17.
Remove Article 16 and 17 to add 16 and 17 to the warrant?
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. Article 18 through 25.
I move to add Articles 18 to 25 to the warrant.
I just have a question on Article 19, and I know that Michael, probably Michael Palmer isn't here tonight, but this, this is requesting additional voting booths? Is there any particular place, or is this for every precinct? Or how many? Do we know yet?
My general understanding, and I'll get back to the board with clarification on that, is this is essentially upgrading and updating our stock of booths, but I will get the board the exact numbers on that. We'll have that information for you between now and your next meeting.
So a second on that motion.
Thank you. So the motion and a second for Articles 18 through 25, that addressed your questions. Ms. Lynn?
I have one more.
Okay.
Grammatical change, and that's in Article 25, where it means, where it states amend Sections E and F of Chapter 107. It should be demolition to read.
Can we amend the motion then to include the correction?
Are we allowed to amend a petitioner's article? Or is that a typo?
I would consider that a typo. It doesn't substantially change the.
Just so people understand it.
Yeah.
That may have been the way the article was drafted, and in most cases, we leave them as presented.
All right, then I'll withdraw my, I'll withdraw my motion.
Or your change?
To the motion.
My change, yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second without any changes to add Articles 18 and 25. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. Articles 26 through 31.
I move to add Articles 26 to 31 to the warrant.
Chairman, I have a question on Article 26. I, I know it's a petitioner's article, but I'm questioning whether or not it's even a legal article because of the status of the Woods Hole Road. So maybe that just gets determined at town meeting with the recommendation, and we let it go? Is that the idea?
Does the state highway, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we have no control over a state highway at all.
Yeah, this, this may be something we refer to town council and address in our recommendation. All right, I apologize. A motion and a second for Articles 26 through 31. We have that, correct?
Yeah.
All right, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. Articles 32 through 41.
I move that we add Articles 32 to 41 to the warrant.
Okay, and I would just make sure everybody, a motion and a second, thank you. I would note that Article 41 does extend for almost three pages, so make sure everyone is aware of that.
I just have one question about Article 40. It states that to fund a Falmouth housing stabilization program. I didn't know we had one. And if we don't have one, would it require that there be, that there be some vote to create such a program?
I can respond. I'm not sure if these will pick me up or not. That is a request of a group of housing agencies to fund an existing stabilization fund held, and I think it's the Falmouth Housing Trust is the lead applicant. I'm not certain of that, but it isn't creating a municipal account. It's, it's contributing to a private nonprofit account. Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to add Articles 32 through 41 to the warrant. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. Next page, Article 42.
I move to add Article 42 to the warrant.
Motion and a second to add Article 42 to the warrant.
Just a question. Article 42 is, no, it's Article 41. We've already voted on 41, haven't we?
Yes.
All right, I got that. No, I have no question on 42.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. All right, Article 43 and 44.
I move that we add Articles 43 and 44 to the warrant.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. And Article 45.
I move we add Article 45 to the warrant.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? It's unanimous. And we need a motion to execute the warrant.
Move to, we proceed to execute the warrant.
Motion and a second to execute the warrant. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? And it's unanimous. All right, next item on our agenda is to discuss the capital improvement plan and refer this to the Finance Committee.
If you could.
If you could come to the microphone, please. Is this procedural, Nancy?
I don't know what you're calling.
Okay.
Nancy Hayward, Precinct 5. Mr. Chairman, I know at the start of the meeting you announced about if people were going to record. Now, I know that Mr. Foss came in, and I know that he started setting up something. Now, he may be recording sound. I don't know what he set up over there. And so my question to you, Mr. Chairman, is, and I don't see Mr. Foss now, is Mr. Foss recording, if not visually, verbally this meeting? Thank you.
Well, I do not know. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I think at this point, Mr. Foss is not in the room. I think we didn't, well, we will have to just keep our eyes peeled for Mr. Carlton Foss and hopefully trust that he is familiar with the process and obeying the rules and not at this time recording anything without the board's permission. But thank you for bringing that to my attention. But thank you for bringing that to my attention. All right. And Mr. Suso, we have a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance Director Jennifer Petite is with us this evening, and she's going to make some remarks about the capital improvement process. I know the board is familiar with this process from prior years. We appreciate Jennifer's expertise and guidance in moving this from a five-year plan to a 10-year plan. The board has a copy of that, and from a standpoint of protocol, we would seek the board's approval to transmit this to the Finance Committee so they can begin their work. The timing of this, of course, is such that this would allow certain capital items to be considered in the November town meeting, and that is what's determining our moving forward at this time. Jennifer?
Thank you. On Friday, the 10-year capital plan was distributed in your packet to the Board of Selectmen, and I just wanted to make some comments about the process. I don't have a PowerPoint. I'm trying to keep this simple. But last year, a capital advisory committee was formed, and we met weekly. And really what came out of that meeting was they focused on revenue generation, and I know that the board is still in the process of looking at those options. So when I looked at year-end, I knew that we'd have at least $3 million in free cash to identify for the capital program. So I put out the request to the department heads, and they responded. And the capital program in front of you is to the tune of about $2.7 million. And so just, you know, for an overview, identifying the 2.7... Well, in the capital advisory committee process, the committee felt that if we could identify the $3 million a year for capital, that even though we couldn't hit everything that was asked for, we'd be able to make some good headway in the capital program. So that's why I identified the $3 million. Moving forward, in November, the Board of Selectmen will adopt operating budget policies, and we can talk about a financial overview at that point. And the board is continuing to support putting money into the capitalization stabilization program, capital stabilization program, which we will look at moving forward for funding the capital program. So this year in November, we are recommending, you know, funding it for about $2.7 million. And I gave you the 10-year plan. It has what was appropriated in FY '13, what the department heads had asked for in '14 and what the recommendation was and is. And there's backup one sheet for each item in the capital that the department heads had requested, and so that should give you some information if you have any questions of some of the detail on the capital. And really, I just wanted you to have a look at it and answer any questions you may have this evening.
Questions from the board?
I just have one question. So you're saying this evening to make a statement that we have X amount of dollars from free cash moving forward?
Yeah. I haven't finished certifying the financial statements yet, but I know there will be more than 3 million. I don't have an exact figure, but I'm comfortable with the 3 million right now recommending for the capital plan. And the reason why I'm coming in front of the board, and it might seem a little bit early, is I really want to transmit this to the Finance Committee so they can have their subcommittee do their work and talk to the department heads over the next few weeks and have some recommendations for town meeting. And this will really enable the Finance Committee to have some time to really look and dig into the work, but wanted to present it to the board first before transmitting it to the Finance Committee.
I'd just like to make a statement. We haven't seen $3 million in free cash in quite a few years, so I think that's wonderful.
I know. The free cash will be healthy this year. You did have 3.3 last year, I'd like to point out.
Right.
And I think through the budget policy and managing, you know, your estimated receipts and keeping an eye on your budget turnbacks, you can try to manage your free cash upfront. Sometimes you can, and sometimes you can't, especially when the economy kind of goes down or goes up, you'll have more free cash. But you will definitely have a healthy free cash this year.
Just to clarify then about the stabilization fund. That means this is going to have a chance to grow to the point we want it to be. We won't have to tap into it right now, sort of just as we put into the piggyback. The piggyback actually can fill up a little bit. Does that understand the process?
Exactly. And also, I'd like to mention, as I was putting the capital plan together, this was my first year of, obviously, you know, I've been here almost a year now in Falmouth, and it was the first time I really was able to look at what the requests were, and I met with all the department heads. Heather and I went out and looked at some of the vehicles and equipment. So it was the first time I was really able to wrap, you know, my head around the capital plan and what the needs were and what they were asking for. And so moving forward, with that information behind me, I'll be able to make better recommendations or see if we feel that we need to draw on that stabilization fund. But right now, we are in the position where we can let it grow.
The thing that I would notice about it is that the request came to $6.1 million, and that if it was reduced to $2.7 million, I'm thinking about all those requests that are not going to be given to any of the departments. And did you have some type of a guideline that you would say, well, this is how much we received in this department last year, and so this next year it should be about the same? And, I mean, was there something that you could go from $6.1 million to $2.7 million? And so as I went through, I saw things that I would kind of look at, and there's a lot to look at here. And then, of course, I only stayed within the first two or three columns. You know, there wasn't...
Right.
And as I looked at it, and I think about other budgets that I've worked on, and I thought about what a reduction that is for anyone who has made a request. So I'm just asking, did anything stand out, how there is such a large difference between the 6.1 and the 2.7?
It is a great question. And my approach is, I know that the vehicles and equipment really haven't been replaced in a number of years, and we're trying to catch up. So I gave somewhat of a priority to that and wanted to address all the department's needs, so I didn't want to be heavy on one department and not heavy on the other department, if you will. And then I asked the department heads to prioritize that. And I wanted to put the priorities in here, but not a lot... They should be on your individual sheet. So I do leave it up to the department heads, what would be your number-one priority and what wouldn't. Take, for example, the police department. Their request in here was for a full communications system, which was $750,000, and through a number of meetings, the recommendation is $250,000 to, you know, with some radios and the repeaters and things of that nature. So we tried to address the immediate needs, and that's how you get down to the manageable number. And then we'll go back and look at everything after it's been approved, and we will rework it. And, you know, some of the requests can be, you know, put out to the out-year. Some of it can be a wish list, but we try to address the immediate needs.
Do you possibly think that the $2.7 million is going to increase?
Well, this is the recommendation of the town manager. The Finance Committee will gather their subcommittees and meet with department heads. They might have a different recommendation. I can't really speak to that right now, but right now, this is the recommendation.
Just a couple of comments on that whole issue of priority and expectations. I think any of those selectmen that served on the capital advisory committee know that the request and expectation for fiscal '14's capital was 8 million. When the request actually came in, they trimmed down 2 million. It was a $6 million request. The key really is having a sustainable source of revenue that we can commit to every year. And we're at a point where we think we're at about $3 million, that if we sustain our practices moving forward, that Jennifer's already talked about, that we'll have a plan that we can fund each year from this point forward at about $3 million. And that's where the department heads can build confidence that their funding needs will be met, and you'll see that 6 million get closer to the $4 million range on an annual basis. So it's the consistency.
Thank you.
And I noticed there are also some items that we moved to operating budget.
Yes.
Can you give an approximate total as to... So that will be still capital improvements, but covered under the operating budget?
Yes, we... As if you remember, in the last operating budget, the recommendation in April, we did move about $400,000 of reoccurring capital items to the operating budget, and we want to continue that practice. And so I tried to give as much information as possible in this 10-year plan, and you'll also see what we might have proposed for an ESCO program, the energy-efficient program. But yes, you can see that with police cruisers, we funded police cruisers at about $55,000 last year, and when we move into the operating budget, the recommendation will be more towards 100, because we'll be funding those every year. The other issue, and it really comes to what was asked to before, is how do we take the 6 million and take it to 3? Well, I believe it was like 800,000 was asked for for roads and sidewalks, but we put in 4. So it was something to that effect. But I wanted to give as much information as I could, that I knew when I was putting the plan together.
I was worried at 2008, when things were much better. I believe we had a vehicle maintenance and replacement policy at that time, and I know that kind of goes by the board when there isn't sufficient funds to even manage the program. And in looking at some of the condition of the vehicles that are being requested for this year, it's really clear that we have not been able to replace those. So maybe as things get better, we could get back to that vehicle replacement program that I think it worked fairly well. The other comment I wanted to make was under general government, the request for the GIS flyover that is not funded enough because the county is doing it for the whole Cape. Instead of every town spending 100 and some thousand individually for the flyover, we can do one flyover for almost the same amount of money. So that's a great savings.
I think it's important to note that the first capital advisory committee before the one that we had done last year came up with an idea, an ideal, somewhere between $2.5 and $3 million would be needed for capital. By having this free cash right now provides this board in this community a little breathing room. Now, I know that folks in government don't want to hear that, but it provides the taxpayers a little bit of relief as we move forward. It allows us to catch our breath and make sure that whatever we do to fund our ongoing capital programs are very thoughtful and make sure that they don't hit any individual or any individual groups more than any others, and that we can spread that capital improvement as we move forward. And so I think the message we're getting tonight for folks in the community is that things are looking a little bit brighter, things are looking a little bit better when it comes to capital. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just comment, a couple of things. Number one, just to underscore, it's extraordinarily important that we remain disciplined as we look at this process, and as the board can see, there's a little bit of a moderate recovery going on here. We obviously hope it'll be sustained and continue to grow, and I want to applaud all my colleagues in the departments for their cost-saving measures, their willingness to be cautious with their spending, and this board setting the lead in terms of our caution in investing in capital and operating. But I do want to emphasize it in looking at this, any one department has considerable needs, but it's incumbent on us in the manager's office, working with the finance director, to achieve a balance, and that's what we really attempted to do here. And it's about making recommendations, and that's what these are, among some very compelling and challenging priorities. So as Jennifer's noted, that will go forward now to the Finance Committee with the selectmen's concurrence, of course, in advance for a much more deliberative review process. And I also want to note for Selectman Flynn that actually the GIS flyover was a suggested funded element here. We will pursue the issue that you brought up and clarify that a bit further as to, you know, where the county is vis-à-vis the town, because you make a very important comment there and point, so we will explore that going forward.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it's part of the 208 plan that the Cape Commission and the county is doing on wastewater. And in order to... You have to wait, obviously, for the leaves to fall off the trees to really get a good view of all the land mass. But it's important to have that up-to-date land mass, and it's really important in doing the regional projects to do it all at the same time, because otherwise you have towns doing it different years, and then it doesn't make any sense. And then you have something that really isn't up to date. So this was all part of the 208 wastewater program. The other thing I was going to mention was on the dredge. I noticed that there are some requests in here for dredging, and I wanted to mention that the county is purchasing a second dredge, so that's going to make it a lot easier for all the towns on the Cape to get their dredging completed.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I would move that we refer to this to the Finance Committee.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anyone in the public here to comment on this agenda item? All right, and before I call for the vote, I would like to ask one question myself. This capital improvement request form, is this new?
Yes.
Okay. I have to... I'm overjoyed to see it, I guess, because I've never seen anything like this before. It not only outlines the request, and it actually... Many of these actually have pictures, some of them in color, which is always nice, detailing exactly why it is that the request is being made. And I think certainly for the... Since I've been on the board, I've never seen so much detail about why these requests are being made, and I'm sure the Finance Committee may be tickled pink to actually see this kind of information. And certainly, and hopefully I imagine that this will be made available to town meeting representatives who have questions, because these are the sorts of questions that get asked, and the answers are right here. So thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and vote to refer the comprehensive wastewater management plan to the DEP and discuss the wastewater quality management committee requested articles.
Mr. Chairman, could I interject one item? I apologize, a little housekeeping matter. Technically, the board, if you so choose, would be referring this to the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, so I would ask the board if you would consider that, if you deem to move forward with that motion.
Okay. As opposed to the DEP?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I believe Mr. Turkington, do we have the chair? Do you have a presentation for us? I am to understand or not.
Eric Turkington, Precinct 1, Chairman of the Wastewater Quality Management Committee. We have a presentation. Our presenter is over at the Lawrence School at meet your teacher night, and wasn't planning to be here until 7:30, but if someone knows how to make the slide thing, produce slides, we can move ahead with this anyway. Well, that's not it. That is it. Okay, Mr. Chairman, we understand we are not the main thing on the menu here tonight, and we'll be as brief as we can. The plan that was distributed to you on July 29th and which you're considering tonight is precisely the same plan that this board approved back in August unanimously. All the elements are the same. They're the same as the ones that the town meeting heard about last year and that the voters have spoken on this past May. So there are no new elements or surprises in this plan. What there is, is a lot of updates and grammatical fixes and rearrangements so that it flows better, technical changes of that nature. But the basic plan that's before you tonight is the same one that was before you last year that you adopted. We have prepared a chronology of what has gone on since you voted last year with our committee and in moving this plan forward. I will avoid going through it point by point. We'll have copies of that for you. In fact, I think they've been distributed. If they haven't, they'll be distributed in the next 15 minutes. But basically, the premise here is that our committee, working with the town departments and the state and everybody else, has provided many opportunities for public comment, public input, and that what is before you tonight is a reflection of that. We have a timetable that we're trying to stick to, and it's important that we do this because of the financing. this, because the financing, as you know, is a complicated thing. Windows of opportunity don't stay open unless you exercise them when the opportunity arises. And so the timetable that this board has approved, and that the town meeting and everybody have, have heard about and adopted, does mean that it, it's important for us to have this CWMP approved by the end of this month by this board. In December, the town is committed under its settlement agreement with the DEP to have this final CWMP in place. And we need to have it approved by the state by January in order for the financing plan to be put together. So there, so there are reasons why moving it along now is important. Moving it along now does not mean the end of public comment. The MIPA statute calls for a local public hearing on the final plan, and the Cape Cut Commission will also hold a public hearing as part of the final plan after it's submitted by this board. So we would be happy to take any comments or questions you may have, but I, I think it's been before the board for seven weeks now. I think any, anybody who would, would have questions would be happy to answer them.
Questions from the board?
My understanding is also any changes have been made, whether they be minor and grammatical, were made during meetings of your committee?
Yes. Yes. No, the committee has seen this, and in fact, line by line, seen it and gone through it with a fine-tooth comb, and what was presented to you reflects that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
I have a comment about it. I think that when we were discussing this before, that probably, we have seen this so many times, and we have really paid attention to it. And there's a lot of information for us, and maybe I understood some, and then eventually I really did understand it. So I thought it was a point that at our last meeting, there could have been a vote. But we didn't have public comment here in front of the selectmen at that point. And I feel that this evening, it's good that, that you're back again, saying the, basically the same things, bringing us up to date. And it is time for public comment, and it's been very well presented.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a moment.
Well, I just wanted to comment, too, that it was approximately two years ago that we derailed the, the draft plan as it existed at that time. And we said, you know, there really needs to be a lot more work done on this, we need to have more people involved, and, and then, of course, all the alternatives came to the, to the forefront. And this plan includes a lot of planning regarding the alternatives, planning and the monitoring of alternatives to determine their effectiveness. So I think that last almost two years has truly benefited not only the, the content of the plan, and the way it's organized, and the way all the information is presented, but the fact that the community has had a long time over the time that the Water Quality Management Committee has been meeting, particularly your meetings have been open to the public. All of your information is on, on the website. So the information has really been readily available, and anybody who was interested could attend the meeting and make suggestions or whatever. So I think this last almost two years has really made it a much better document, and, and one that I think we can be proud of.
Mr. Chairman, I just respond by saying that I would like to take credit for doing all that work, but most of the work was done by everyone else on the committee, particularly Virginia Valiella over here, who, who took upon herself to answer two hundred and forty-two questions that, that were presented as, after your first document was sent up to the state, not only by state agencies, but by local activists. She provided good answers to all those two hundred and forty-three questions.
I think it's important to note that the board had received a letter last week from the Coalition of Buzzards Bay, and I understand that you folks, with the subsequent emails, have addressed that, but I think it's important for folks here to understand, and maybe you can address that yourself.
I believe there is someone here from the Coalition.
How do you speak at the board? So I'm Rachel Jacoba, I'm the science director for the Coalition, so it was my signature on the, on the letter that went out last week. And I just, in, in speaking with the Water Quality Management Committee on Friday, it was made clear to us that the thirty days was a, that we had requested was a significant issue in terms of the timeline with MIPA. And we strongly support the CWMP. We think it's important, an important step towards improving the quality of Thalmann's estuaries. And we don't, we understand that through the MIPA process, we'll continue to have the opportunity to comment on the, the plan, because we do still have concerns about, about some elements of the plan. But the, we've been working quite a bit with the town and the Water Quality Management Committee to work through those issues. And so, you know, if it's an issue in terms of moving forward for the various town deadlines, it's not an issue. We, we had hoped to be, when this plan came before the board of selectmen, we had hoped to be on the same page with the Water Quality Management Committee and to be able to support the plan. And like I said, we still have some concerns, and so we're not there yet, but we hope that in the coming weeks before we go to the MIPA process, that we'll be able to be on the same page with the town when we get in front of MIPA.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public?
I would move that we authorize the town managers to submit the final comprehensive wastewater management plan and to the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you all.
You've also asked us to speak briefly on three warrant articles, which we have slides on, and I can be real brief on those, too, if you would like, now or, or later.
We just approved the warrant, I think we might want to bring them back when we're doing articles.
We will. The opportunity with them here this evening, the thought was that, because it fits within the, the whole question of what we're doing with the water quality management plan, that there would be some opportunity for the board to ask questions about these articles. If you'd like, we can bring them back at another time, or we can go through it this evening.
Just a key thought was the articles came in at the request of the Water Quality Management Committee. They've been placed on the warrant of the request of the Board of Selectmen. So that was a key distinction that we want to make sure the board was aware of, since the Water Quality Management Committee is an advisory committee.
So in essence, these are our articles.
Well, if that's the case, I'll sit down. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, then we'll have them back. Mr. Chairman, we'll have you back to explain the detail of those articles then, when, when we go through the rest of the warrant, so. Thank you. All right. At this time, we, the board is going to recess for about five minutes. The next section of our meeting will be to discuss the wind turbine mitigation alternatives. This could be a long session, and we've already been here, this board has been here for an hour or more. We would like to stretch our legs a little bit. So we'll recess for five minutes, and then we'll take up the rest of our agenda.
Ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We'll now reconvene for the remainder of our agenda, the next item being the wind turbine mitigation alternatives. Tonight, we're soliciting public discussion, public comment, and the board will be making a decision this evening. Mr. Sussell, you have a presentation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a brief PowerPoint presentation. We did prepare a summary of issues previously discussed with the board at your recent multiple discussion meetings on wind turbines, and this PowerPoint hit some of those highlights. My colleague, Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper, will kick that off. Heather?
Sure. The board has asked that we frame the discussion this evening by presenting at least the highlights of Report Number Three, and that was sent to the board on Friday afternoon, in addition to some several financial sheets requested by members of the board. I was going to ask for the first slide, but I have it. This really is framing the discussion for members of the board. Whatever decision is made about the town's two wind turbines, the Board of Selectmen will have to take the lead, with assistance as required, to advance the decision with the community and the neighbors. This is clearly in the community's best interest, and the time to act has arrived. This public policy decision will factor broad-ranging community interests, the potential liability of claims and litigation, and existing contracts. Given these challenges and the town's desire to explore potential resolutions with concerned neighbors, Town Council has advised that any responsible resolution should include a component to reasonably respond to those concerns, in part through the town's acquiring certain sound easements and working toward a resolution of pending litigation. Included in your report is simply a physical presentation, a graphic, that sets community interests at the apex of your decision-making, grounded by liability of both existing litigation and contract liability, and with that framework lies your important public policy decision. The community interests will include taxpayers, voters, neighbors, some that are claimants, some that are not, renewable energy advocates, the Board of Health and other policy leaders, and varied constituencies, many of whom you will hear this evening. Litigation liability is currently monetized at $1.5 million. Recent court decisions have resulted in a reduction in the monetized risk of ongoing litigation, however, risk remains. The town has three lawsuits pending with others on the horizon. There is an expanding risk that a court order will potentially take control of the matter, and the town will be left with no reasonable and effective options. Contract liability, $7 million, potential exposure. The town has a liability described in detail in the first alternatives report number one. We have received favorable response from the Mass Clean Energy Center on the potential forgiveness of wrecks for the four alternatives reviewed in Report Number Two, and those were the operating scenarios with an excess of 80 percent production. We don't have any guidance on the Wind Two obligations beyond the initial letter we received from the state. And the Town Manager will walk through some of the recommended motions. The features that we recommend are included in a final motion.
Thank you, Heather. Members of the board, just a, you know, again, a summary recommended motion for the board to consider at the conclusion of your discussion this evening. Following public comments on the alternatives this evening, we recommend the board adopt a motion to include the following components. Select an operating scenario, including total hours of operation for each turbine, the exact times of which, curtailment of which can wait, but we need the total hours for each turbine. Number two, authorize the Town Manager to engage a facilitator. Further, to vote to create a fund for the acquisition of acoustic easements and exploration of settlement of existing claims. We respectfully request that you, that the board request a special town meeting to be set tentatively for November 14th, 2013. Also, to direct the Town Manager to develop the necessary articles and procedures to implement the adopted alternative that you select this evening. And finally, to authorize the Town Manager to continue negotiating relief from all contracts and to seek additional financial assistance if feasible. Members of the board, this is what we respectfully recommend at the conclusion of your process this evening. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we will be taking comment from the public. Because we've returned from a recess, I'll again ask if there's anyone here who would like to record the meeting in audio, and if there's anyone who seeks permission for video recording.
My name is Catherine Aden. I'm from Cape Cod Broadcasting, and I'd like to record portions of the meeting for audio.
And I'm John Carlton-Fosse, and I would like to record portions of the meeting for audio/video.
Any objections from the board? So granted. Is there anyone else who wishes to record audio or video this evening? All right. And just a reminder, we have copies of our speaker's policy in the back. We ask that you keep your comments as brief as possible. The board this evening is not electing to put a limit on speaker times or the number of limits, but we ask that you respect the time of others and be brief with your comments. If there's something that someone else has said that you agree with, it's sufficient to say that you agree with them. If you have nothing new to add, please don't consume the time of others and stand up and say the same thing that someone else has said. We will not be hearing from the same person twice unless everyone has been given the opportunity and time allows someone to come back up and add something additional. So at this time, anyone who would like to speak in the back, sir, with the striped shirt. And if you would help me out by holding some hands up, it would help me identify some individuals so we could get a list going. This is going to be done town meeting style, folks, so I'll simply be asking for folks as I see them.
I'm Bob Frosch. I'm a longtime resident of the town. I come from a somewhat different background, being a scientist and an engineer. Spent a lot of my time doing low-frequency acoustics in the ocean and low-frequency vibration on the land. I have spent most of my career running large R&amp;D organizations that built big things and did major policy, including being Assistant Secretary of the Navy for R&amp;D, Administrator of NASA, and Vice President in charge of research and development at General Motors. I'm used to large things and large problems. I'm not used to people dithering without trying to find out what the basis of the problem is. This is a town which probably has more scientists than engineers per capita than most places in the U.S. maybe in the world, and nobody has bothered to see if we could put together some kind of a mostly volunteer group that would examine what's actually going on. There are some publications, peer-reviewed publications. They're very suggestive about some of the acoustic effects going on. If it turns out that some of the hypotheses they suggest are correct, then there might be quite straightforward mitigation. If you use the mitigation means that will be suggested by the DPA measurements of the DP, DBA measurements of the DEP, you will waste a lot of time and money because you will mitigate nothing. You can't do it with, if I, if it is what it appears to be, you can't do it with ordinary heard acoustic little barriers and dampers and so on. It's probably at very low frequency. It's a phenomenon, whichever one of several it may be, that doesn't affect everybody. It's kind of like seasickness. Some people get seasick all the time, some people never get seasick, some people get seasick some of the time. This may be that kind of phenomenon, and you have to take that into account, as well as the basic physics and engineering of it. It seems to me before doing anything final, or at least anything which leaves out the possibility of other things, we ought to make some kind of a town effort to find out what's happening. Who's getting sick, how they're getting sick, if they're getting sick, what's making them sick, what it's coming from with the turbines. It's not the kind of thing where you can do a one-size-fits-all, and for us to walk by the possibility of doing the science seems to me to be very strange. Thank you.
Mr. Ford?
John Ford, 372 Blacksmith Shop Road. I have a brief statement I'd like to read. Good evening, Selectmen, Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager. You have all learned my appreciation and respect for your extensive work in finding a solution to the lingering dilemma that is Wind One and Wind Two. I realize the enormity of this task, where you have to consider and weigh the fiscal condition of the town, and more importantly, the health of a significant number of fellow neighbors. Those of us whose health has been seriously attacked by the installation of these industrial wind turbines are hopeful that you will do no further harm in determining their near-future course. In determining the fate of, in determining the fate of your neighbors' health, may I point to the concern of the Falmouth Board of Health's letter to you dated September 5th, 2013. That letter correctly acknowledges the plight of your neighbors living in, near the turbines, and emphatically states that, quote, "Sleep interruptions have potentially serious health effects." In closing, I want to cite the World Health Organization Community Noise Document of 1999. Quote, "When there is a reasonable possibility that the public health will be endangered, even though scientific proof may be lacking, action should be taken to protect the public health without awaiting the full scientific proof. The full costs associated with noise pollution, including monitoring, management, lowering levels, and supervision, should be met by those responsible for the source of the noise," unquote. Money has no conscience, but I believe that each and every one of you do. Thank you for your time.
Mrs. Okagawa?
Thank you. Good evening to all of you. I'm Linda Okagawa of 821, excuse me, West Falmouth Highway. First of all, I do, I couldn't agree more with the first gentleman who spoke. However, since we're focusing on your mitigation options, I will stick to that area. I have two important points to make, and certainly I could bring up many others. First of all, Wind Two has never been tested for compliance at night. How can you propose running it 24/7? Tests were done by the DEP at my house during the daytime with Wind Two and Wind One running on June 5th and June 12th, 2012. On June 12th, results were 6.6 dB over ambient, higher than our new bylaw for the town, higher than special permits approved in Falmouth. The actual measurement of turbine noise was 55.5. Daytime ambient was 48.9, largely due to traffic noise, and this was acknowledged by Laurel Carlson of the DEP. Nighttime ambient measured in the nighttime studies conducted by the DEP in May 2012 at 27 Ridge Road Drive was 29.2. In the long-term study at 124 Ambleside Drive by HMMH in 2010, it was 29.5. Based on these measurements at properties that abut Route 28 Highway, as my property does, we can predict nighttime ambient noise of no more than 30 dB, and certainly not over 35 dB in the dead of night. I note that both these properties had higher daytime ambient levels than my property, making this comparison conservative. 821 West Falmouth Highway is highly likely to exceed the DEP compliance standard of 10 dB over ambient. Therefore, nighttime compliance of Wind Two must be formally measured prior to operation of the turbine at night. And what are you going to do about that? Now, my second point. The second point is the lack of mitigation for shadow flicker or strobing. The CEC requires that all wind projects it finances have a pre-construction study so that flicker can be addressed by sighting, which is more than 10 times the rotor diameter, or 2,700 feet in Falmouth, or by planned mitigation. Mr. Gore has confirmed that no pre-construction flicker study for Falmouth exists. But the WTOP requested DMV KIMA and the Mass CEC to model shadow flicker and its mitigation options for all homes impacted by Wind One and/or Wind Two. DMV KIMA concluded that, if not curtailed, over 50 homes would be expected to receive more than 10 hours of real-case flicker per year, or 30 hours of worst-case flicker per year. My property, for example, at 988 feet from Wind Two and well within the 2,700 feet, exceeds the Falmouth Wind Turbine Bylaw, the Cape Cod Commission, and the DEPDPH Health Impact Study Best Practices. All three limit shadow flicker to no more than 10 hours per year, 30 minutes per day. WTOP consultants estimated flicker curtailment for Wind Two and Wind One. The how-to of mitigation is clearly spelled out in the WTOP final report. Please reread it and include it in your operation plan. Thank you.
Red jacket, you had your hand up?
Sir?
Sir, here in the red jacket, did you have your hand up?
Good evening. Courtney Barber, Falmouth Heights. I will say upfront that I'm very much in favor of turning the turbines on 24/7. I'm also in favor of mitigating the neighbors when there's adequate proof to support their complaints, and I agree essentially with what the first speaker said. It needs to be scientific-based. My concern tonight is for mitigation of the climate. We, as a society, have dug ourselves into a very deep hole, and we're just beginning to wake up as a society to this problem. And if we don't do something substantial, we're going to be in deep trouble in the future. Most of you in this room are old enough so that it's not going to be impacting you very much, but for sure, it's going to be impacting your children and your grandchildren. And if we don't do something to mitigate the climate, we're going to be in deep trouble in the future. And so I am in favor of mitigating the climate, and one of the ways to do that is to turn these turbines 24/7, set an example for other communities around us so that more turbines are built, and eventually, we can get off this crazy dependence on fossil fuels. Thank you.
Bear with me. Kathy Driscoll, Antler Shore Drive. First, I want to say thank you for all of the work that you have done to the Board of Selectmen, for the hours of reading emails, for the meetings that you have had, for meeting with townsfolk on the issue, to the Town Manager's office and to the staff for all of the additional hours on top of daily responsibilities of putting in to come up with the options that are before you this evening. The, the four schemes that you've put together address many varied issues, trying to balance them on both sides of the I said, you said type of situation that we're seeing in Falmouth, that you are listening to not only the neighbors and their concerns, but those of the other people here in Falmouth that also have a voice in this issue. The options that you've presented all contain mitigation, and the WTOP did try to address mitigation in their tops, topics, in their meetings. I was a supporter of mitigation through that process, but it was something that didn't- move forward. And I'm very pleased to see that it is at least something that is being included to address the concerns that several neighbors have brought up over the last three-plus years. The mitigation that you're looking at is varied. You're looking at it on a case-by-case type of situation. It allows for looking at the unique nature of what the neighbors have brought forward to you, and I think for them being able to deal with this on a one-on-one basis is a very, you know, promising thing for the neighbors, that also there's a confidentiality in it that they have also expressed in the past. But the mitigation can only really happen when we have the operation. The full operation of Wind One and Wind Two does provide you with the maximum revenue. But with that full operation, you can have smart operation. We have had cases, it was something that was discussed again in WTOP, we've had statements by neighbors saying that wind direction is from, you know, the wind direction provides a specific source of the issue, whether it be sound or pressure. So when you're looking at operation of the turbines, this may not be something that you're doing right away, but as you're developing the plan, as you're developing those protocols for operating the turbines, you can use smart operation. Ramp up the turbines and shutting them down puts the greatest wear and tear on the machines and can affect the longevity as well as an increase in the maintenance costs. We want to minimize that. You can do that through smart operation. And with that, the increase in revenue, reduce maintenance costs, increase in mitigation that allows for the homeowners to be able to enjoy their homes and their properties or whatever their decision is through this issue. Courtney stated climate change. It is something that's real. It's something that I do have a belief in. I work professionally to try and do what I can, and also personally what I can, to make my footprint smaller and to provide a different future than what scientists are providing us today. I want to see that difference. The small steps that we're taking in Falmouth, not just the wind turbines, but the solar panels, the energy efficiency projects through the ESCOs, all of the people that are coming to you, these scientists that we have per capita, have valuable information. Utilize that information, put it together. We can have these small steps become big steps and change. Thank you.
Judy Statson, Precinct One. The four options presented to the Selectmen all add to the distress of the impacted neighbors. There is no option to keep the turbine damage at the current unacceptable level of 12 hours on and 12 hours off. There is no option to reduce the daily damage we are inflicting on our fellow residents. Surely, surely, the people who voted against dismantling the turbines did not know that their votes would translate directly into increased distress for their impacted neighbors. We must not run these turbines 24/7. We must not run them 27 either. These are terrible options. At the very least, we should give the neighbors 12 hours of relief in each 24-hour day. We have already taken a savage bite out of their lives, their health, and the enjoyment of their property. Please vote no to all the options before you. We are state and local voters. We are state and local taxpayers. We are responsible for the huge mistake we made. We must not continue to deny our mistake. We must not continue to make a small group of residents suffer the consequences of our mistake.
In the red?
My name is Dick Taylor, Precinct Six. I was thinking, I was looking at the various options, and you might consider paying the neighbors off sooner than 10 years so they can afford to pay for mitigation without waiting for a decade to get all the money that you're potentially offering them. You could use all the net income from the turbines to pay for mitigation until 25% of the expected net income for 10 years is reached. Then the town would start receiving all or 100% of the net income from the turbines. The neighbors might be more willing to agree with a faster payout. The cost of the town is in delaying their income portion for four to five years. It's the second item. More money would be available for mitigation if they operate more. This gives the neighbors an incentive to have the turbines run as much as possible. They could get more money instead of as much sleep, I guess. The idea, the third thing, running one turbine while curtailling the other would likely still annoy the neighbors. It's like leaving them on anyway, so I don't know. A partial, running only one turbine at a time would give us much credit. And the last thing is Falmouth did pass the noise limit of less than 10 dB above background for two of the four nighttime noise measurements at 211 Blacksmith Shop Road. And these two measurements were with higher wind speed noise measurements. Faulty analysis did not recognize that they passed. The Mass DEP official would not reconsider a correct analysis because the Mass DEP sound study and decision was final to prevent endless reconsideration of decisions.
In the back, Judy? You're next.
I'm Judy Fenwick. I was a member of the WTOP. I'm also a Town Meeting member from Precinct One. I went back and looked through the huge notebook that we developed when the WTOP was deliberating, and I read some of the early reports that preceded our being engaged, such as the Weston and Sampson Report, which was entitled Wind Energy Facility Mitigation Alternatives Analysis, and it sounded particularly like what you're trying to accomplish with the scenarios that you have up here. But that report was found so wanting by the community that the Selectmen and the Town Manager engaged several other firms to analyze that analysis. The DNV and KEMA did a review of Wind One and Two, the mitigation report, and they called for additional measurements and sound studies to be made. So in looking at those reports, I then went back to why the WTOP was formed, and that was the Selectmen's attempt to bring together members of the community to study the problem. We had a facilitator who was engaged to help us with that, and Mass CEC paid a pretty penny to help with that process. We spent eight months, as you know, a lot of chest beating and mea culpa. We presented a report to you folks, and I think I heard at a Selectmen's meeting within the last month that you had decided after the failed ballot initiative for the scenario that was put forward to take the turbines down, that now you were looking at all the other options that had been submitted in that report. But I think you failed to see one, and I often refer to it as the silver bullet option, and I think it was Option 5B, and it was to take down the turbines and put up photovoltaic cells. And in that option, we had lots of good spreadsheets from Jason Gifford, whom I think you engaged in this process from SEA. I can't remember what it stands for, energy advantage? Is that superior energy advantage? Anyway, Jason Gifford came up with a wonderful financing scheme to take the turbines down, put up PV, and I know those numbers need to be looked at again, but to accomplish this, it required the funding be upfront, and the price tag for that was $3.9 million. So I'd say you haven't turned over all the rocks yet. So in closing, I've heard, I think somebody said earlier this evening, "Do no harm." I believe that's the informal Hippocratic oath, and I'd say we've got sort of a hypocritical pledge here, which is run the turbines because no harm has been proven. One of the items you have up here is to authorize the Town Manager to engage a facilitator, and I'd like to make a recommendation for an almost-local boy who has a title of Special Master. And over the past 20 years, he has taken as his career to assist the September 11 Victim Compensation Fund. He's a Special Master for Executive Compensation under TARP. He's been monitoring and advising on the BP Oil Spill Fund, the Penn State Settlement, the Aurora Victim Relief Fund, the Boston Marathon Bomb Victims, and the Newtown Sandy Hook Community Foundation. He's known as the Master of Disasters. His name is Kenneth Feinberg, and he's from Brockton, Mass, and I think we have a disaster here.
Nancy, yes. You can pull that down. There you go.
Nancy Hayward, Precinct Five, West Falmouth. Mr. Frisch started out with his approach. I started out with my experience in music and the way, the acoustics of certain halls are not discernible by some people, but I had a conductor when I was in the MIT Choral Society, and his thing was the hum. We have a great hum in this room at this moment. I believe that the suffering of the people is not believed by many. I believe that putting the turbines up, Ms. Statson spoke admirably about it. Some people feel that the people are not important, that they're going to solve the world climate change by keeping these turbines running 24 hours a day. I personally believe these turbines need to be taken down. Thank you.
In the blue, the glasses, right on the, you raised your hand? No, in front of you, the gentleman? Did you raise your hand?
Not yet.
No. Two rows back.
Back to me?
No, right in front of you. Did you raise your hand?
Yes.
I thought you did. Okay, I'm sorry. I may forget some names tonight, folks, so I'm going to be pointing and calling jerseys half the time because there's a lot of faces here, so. Faraway glasses and that goes in. Robbie Laird, Blacksmith Shop Road. I've got two main points here, but one, there's much talk of having homeowners sign some sort of an acoustic easement, should presumably be tied to some sort of financial compensation. I believe this has been done successfully in other areas. However, I see a problem for this approach in Falmouth. An acoustic easement for nuisance is fine, but the problem here may actually be tied to health, health issues, and an easement for noise won't cover health issues. If you put health clause into the easement, I believe that, one, I don't think anybody will sign it, or, two, even if they do sign it, I believe you're going to create an unenforceable contract. You cannot sign away your health. Second, and I believe you, the Selectmen, are between the proverbial rock and a hard place. You don't have the money to allow the turbines to run less than, you know, much less than full-time, yet running them at night will harm the neighbors. Meanwhile, the state seems to be attempting to wrestle control of the turbines from the town by basically blackmailing the town to run them at least 80% of the time, otherwise you get no help from the state. Now, there's plenty of official data, data that's in all the paperwork we already have that shows that the nighttime operation of either turbine violates the 10 decibel rule of the state. This first started out, we had the sound modeling done by the engineers for this whole thing. It showed the turbines would be in compliance with the state noise guidelines. However, the number that they came up with was 9.96 decibels, which also may be one of those engineers that actually attended high school and studied significant figures, but it did show that they would be in compliance. The state DEP then came in and said the modeling was done incorrectly. The corrected sound modeling indicates that numerous houses would have exceedances, and this is, again, in all of our paperwork already. This is for both Wind One and Wind Two. Then, when the actual onsite testing was done by the DEP, almost all the numbers came in even higher than the corrected sound modeling showed. So now we have numbers that really show problems at multiple sites, and the DEP sound testing was still done without Wind Two even being on, and we know that having Wind Two on, say, at the houses, my house or Neil's house, adds like another 2 decibels to the numbers in there. So, and yet, these numbers have simply been ignored over and over and over. We have modeling that shows what the problem is. We have modeling that shows which houses are affected, but it seems that when the modeling does not show what's desired, it's just ignored. At this point, it appears it's only onsite testing by the DEP on each individual piece of property is enough to convince the town of Falmouth that there is a real problem. It's not right that the modeling, which was used to place the turbines in the first place, was good enough to do that, but when the modeling is shown to be wrong and then corrected, somehow it does not count. For you to ignore this data is a wanton violation of the state rules on noise pollution. And it's the job of the government to protect the people. The town of Falmouth and the state of Massachusetts are utterly failing to do this. At best, this is lazy government, hoping the problem will just go away. At the worst, it's a power-mad bureaucracy with its own agenda that's just crushing the little people simply because it can. The fact that you don't have the money does not allow you to break the rules. Find the money and please fix the problem. Thank you. Yes. Doctor, I believe?
John Tudor. I'm a retired family physician, and the thing that's bothered me about this whole thing is the symptoms that have been reported don't fit a pattern of disease. The CDC is not willing to study the syndrome because it's too variable, and the way we identify diseases is by pattern and by causation evidence, like tuberculosis affects the lungs because there's a germ in there that's eating up the lung, or sometimes in another organ. The closest set of symptoms that fits this has been called the sick building syndrome, when one or two people get sick and then everybody else gets sick and everybody goes home. When they come and study those, there's no bug, there's no gas, there's no vibration. It's more of a group think. The current argument from the Board of Health letter is that there's something that causes people to be uncomfortable, maybe like the bad air that led to the name of malaria. They used to think it was caused by the bad air next to the swampy places. We know now it's a germ that's transmitted by mosquitoes. I support further studies, as Dr. Frisch said, because, but I think they can be done while the turbines are running full-time. We need more information on different parameters than we're having right now. I want to caution you against putting too much emphasis on the sleep disruption argument because of the hearing on May 24th of, 24th of 2012. Those symptoms were reported by the majority of the people who came to the meeting, something like 25 out of 40 complainers, but only three days earlier, the Board of Health in their own meeting said, "There's not much evidence of anything going on with wind turbines in the literature and all the research we've done, but there's a lot about sleep deprivation. It might be good to hear more about that." Three days later, they got the answer that fit their model.
Here in the blue?
I gave you the email earlier.
And we did receive that. Thank you.
I'm George Woodwell. I live on Church Street in this hole, and I want to convey a note of urgency. The most important issue before governments all around the world at the moment, the government of the United States, Russia, Saudi Arabia, and Falmouth, is the climatic disruption caused by burning fossil fuels and dumping heat-trapping gases into the atmosphere that way and two or three other ways. Failing to address that issue really does mean substantially the end of this civilization. Let me quote an economist at the Economic Summit Meeting in January of this year in Davos. This is Christine Lagarde. She's the head of the International Monetary Fund. She says, just to be precise... She says, just to be precise, "More important than the debt crisis is the issue of climatic change, which in my view, Christine Lagarde, is by far the greatest economic challenge of the 21st century. The science is sobering. The global temperature in 2012 was among the hottest since records began in 1880. Make no mistake, without concerted action, the very future of our planet is in peril." She said that straightforwardly and powerfully before the assembled multitude. People took it pretty seriously, I must say. Then I'd like to quote Jim Butler, who's a fellow citizen of Falmouth. He wrote in a brilliant letter to the Enterprise not long ago, in the final paragraph, "If we fail to assume the responsibility of global leadership in this one vital area, the climatic disruption area, all other local, national, or international threats will have been a moot exercise in denial and firmly putting our heads in the sand, as life as we know it contracts into its own oblivion. We must wake up as citizens of our Mother Earth and demand immediate and meaningful course correction, or we will soon have nothing to be concerned about. It will all be gone with the wind." That's Jim Butler. Well, I would add to that my own perspective, that we don't have a great deal of choice but to amplify our ventures into renewable energy. We did a very wise thing in establishing wind turbines to supplement the energy production by the town. We need more of that, not less, more of it. Panels on every rooftop that's southerly facing and various ways of conserving energy, and we have to do it now. We don't have a great choice. So it's the urgency of the public interest in having a place to live that I advance to you as your primary objective here. Thank you.
Before we go any further, we've had two individuals speak length, at length about climate change, so if you agree with that statement, please keep your comments to the fact that you agree with it. And I just wanna keep this moving on. I don't wanna continue to have folks coming up and talking at length about climate change. Mr. Fineran, you're next.
Mark Fineran, Precinct 6. I am siding with the wind turbine neighbors, and that puts me at odds with some people that I have great allegiances with and other things in this town. But I was just standing there and I noticed one thing. There's all kinds of people that want to keep these turbines on, but there seems to be a group missing in this whole process, and that would be the residents of Blacksmith Shop Road and the neighborhood, the area surrounded by the turbines, surrounding the turbines, that want to keep them turned on. I don't, I don't find any people that hold that position. That seems kinda odd to me, and I think maybe we should think about that a little bit. Thank you.
The lady in blue? Yes. Does anyone else wish to speak this evening?
You have heard from 30 homes and over 60 adults and children who are suffering.
Oh, could you identify yourself with the record?
I'm Kathy Mount, from 221 Blacksmith Shop Road.
Thank you.
I live next door to Neil Anderson, and my husband isn't here tonight. He finds this extremely stressful. When the turbines were on at night before, we had to leave our home every single night. And fortunately, we had a home we could go to that my sister was not yet, not using, and then we came back in the morning before breakfast. But we are not alone in that. There were over 60 individuals and children who have trouble with sleeping at night when the turbines are on. None of your options allow for the turbines to be off at least eight hours a night so that we could sleep undisturbed. You have no mitigation plan that allows the neighbors to sleep at night. I strongly suggest, and I think it's imperative, that you have a mitigation problem figured out before you even consider turning the turbines back on at night. Otherwise, you'll be negatively impacting the health of these neighbors, and I beg you to not do that. I agree with what Robbie Laird said. There is no way we are going to sign away our health with an easement. Thank you.
In the front here, the stripes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Bill Golden. I'm a resident Colonial Way in West Falmouth. I have a background in government, in law, and in business, and I've had a focus in that career of focusing on complex issues involving science and public policy. I've worked at every level of government from the White House down to Town Hall. I've sat in a executive capacity, I've sat in a legislative capacity, and I've been involved in the judicial system. Clearly, this is a very, very complex situation. You just have to listen very shortly to what the spectrum of opinion is here tonight. We've heard from the scientific community. We've heard from residents that have spoken very eloquently about their perceptions of their impacts that they've had as a result of the turbines. But I'm concerned about the limitations on a board that sits as you. And I've seen and witnessed, I've watched on television, I've read the papers, I know how seriously you've taken your roles. But I would, I would submit there's a real limitation on what you can do. I would suggest that your course of action is to create the largest possible option for action here so that that action could address climate change on one side and can address impacts on the other. And although this is a very complex issue, I think that the solution here tonight, given the actual, real limitations of what can be done in terms of determining facts, gradients of acoustic impact, all of the things that you've heard tonight, is fairly straightforward, fairly simple. I stand before you suggesting you should allow both turbines to operate all of the time. Why? Because you're going to create an opportunity to create the largest amount of revenue to the town. That's gonna create the largest amount of revenue for mitigation. It is important to determine what mitigation is right and appropriate. But this board, I, if I was sitting there, I couldn't understand how to do that. And I, if I'm in that role, if I'm a judge, sitting trying to hear testimony, take testimony, look at facts under oath with rules of evidence determining what is presented, if I'm in that capacity, or I'm a mediator, or I'm an arbitrator, I would like the flexibility of having the greatest pool of resources available in the event that what is suggested here tonight is valid in an adversarial process where fact can be determined. Only in an adjudicatory setting, whether that's by a judge or by a facilitator or mediator, will it be possible to determine what the cause is, what the effect is, what the reasonable response will be in terms of either compensation or further action on the turbines. I would just, if I was sitting where you are, I just feel so ill-suited to make those decisions. And therefore, there's this kind of physics that takes over this, this whole deliberative process. The physics being to create that largest resource, to have further testing, to allow the maximum amount of information to be before the people that are in a position where they are most qualified to make that decision in an adjudicatory process, not an executive one, not a legislative one. So I would ask you tonight to keep those turbines running, create the greatest pool possible, to begin the mitigation facilitation as quickly as possible, and to see separate fact from perhaps preference or, or wishful thinking, so that we, as a community, can have that deliberative process finally in the, before the bodies that are best suited to do it. And I really, I, I feel strongly that you have been placed under a burden to respond in a way that your position just doesn't allow yet. So I would ask that you consider that kind of simple approach to a very, very complex problem and to put it before the appropriate body to come up with the appropriate result. Thank you very much.
People who profess to run these turbines 24/7 are really inducing a problem to everybody who lives near them. Why would you do that? Doctor who gave a little talk wants to run them, and yet he wants to harm people. Why would you do that? I don't understand the thinking. It would cause people to just ignore their fellow citizens. Thank you.
The lady in black, next to Mr. Eastman. You had your hand up.
Nicole Goldman, Precinct 1, and I just wanna lend my support to the proposal to maximize the operation of both the turbines 24/7. Thank you.
Ms. Funfar. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Diane Funfar, Ridgeview Drive. I hear people suggesting mitigation in terms of financial gain to us who are suffering. We will not trade our health for money, that we do not want money and give up our good health. That's not what we want. Would anyone in this room wanna do that? I don't think so. Thank you.
In back, the lady in the aisle, the, the pink and white, yes. Leslie, I got you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Susan. I live at 191 Blacksmith Shop Road, and according to one of the, it's the closest house to Wind 1. In all of this, I'm hearing, "Let's run the turbines 24/7 and then we'll figure it out." I liken it to my children, who my youngest is in second grade, and I will work on his homework with him and say, "I've already passed second grade." He's gonna go through second grade once, and if he, especially, is my one who doesn't sleep when these things are running 24/7, and he will not get an opportunity to redo second grade, nor will my other children. I have four children, and I'm really concerned that we're losing sight of the fact that we, as adults, yeah, we'll get another summer, we'll get another season. The kids don't get it back again. They don't get another chance to repeat those grades and miss the things that they're missing at school. So I think we really need to think long and hard about what we're doing to not only the adults, but the kids in the neighborhood. Thank you.
We've heard a lot of, a lot of arguments about global weather. It used to be called global warming until we found out that the scientists lied and made up models. Now it's called climate change. Now we're finding out that HMMH makes up models to make it conceivable to work, and they lied on their models. A lot of good engineers lying on models just to put up turbines and make money. So everything here is about money, and everything needs to be about taking care of our town members' health. We hear stories over and over again from our town members that are getting sick. You can see stories all over the world of turbine neighbors getting sick, of people evacuating their homes here, people evacuating their homes in Australia, and laws being put together where turbines can't be within a mile of people's homes, let alone 900 feet. So, politics is local. Local politics is local. We should not consider specious arguments about global warming, that we are a gnat in a world's size, and we should be worried about our own neighbors' health. Do no harm is a Hippocratic oath. Do no harm is our town members' oath. We need to make sure our town members are well. Another example, global warming. Let's raise the miles per hour on cars. Nobody got hurt from that. Car manufacturers did the signs and made the cars run farther with less gas. We cannot do technology that hurt people. That should be against any kind of government, federal, state, or local. So please, think about what you're doing in terms of our neighbors, about health, about the well-being of this town. Turning, your choice of four choices are no choices. Those are choices to harm the neighbors, whichever choice you pick. Look at the other choices that are around, but do not turn those turbines on more than they are today. In fact, they should simply be shut down and alternatives be found. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Chris Dunn. I live on Lowry Road in downtown Falmouth here. I'm in a profession where I travel across the country on a routine basis, often traveling by air, and one of the things that I notice as I travel is I see wind turbines all over. Three weeks ago, I was in Kingman, Arizona, and I saw a turbine farm with a dozen turbines running, generating, generating power for the community. I support running our turbines 24/7. I support a course of action that preserves, preserves the most options for us going forward. Generate the funds, generate the revenue, seek, seek options for mitigation, but choose options, choose a course of action that preserves our options. Thank you.
My name is Edward Schmidt, and I live on Falmouth Woods Road. And I have for a, quite a long period of time been an advocate of something that has not yet been mentioned tonight in terms of mitigation, and that is a buyout, a voluntary buyout, being offered to any persons in the neighborhood who feel that their health has been impacted or their lifestyle has been negatively impacted in any way whatsoever. I feel very strongly that we need to run the turbines 24/7 for all of the many good reasons that you've already heard. But I think in terms of mitigation and the buyout option, if I lived in that neighborhood, that was, would really be what I'm, I would be looking for from, from you tonight, and I don't know that any other mitigation would really satisfy me. But I've reflected on this quite a bit, and I have lived in 11 different places, 11 different homes during my lifetime, and, and when I say live, for any significant length of time. As I look back, every single move I made in my life, very fortunately, was a very new, positive, exciting experience. It was a step forward, a, a new opportunity, always very positive. I'm, for the first time when I was a kid, we moved to a house out in the country, and it had a lawn, which I never had living in the city. But maybe the very last move of the 11 is very, very appropriate and relevant to what we're talking about here tonight. That was a move right here in Falmouth. I had owned a vacation home here in Falmouth, and I lived there for five years, and then, just spending weekends here, but then I moved to the house full-time. And I wasn't in that house very long when someone purchased the empty lot next to my home. When that lot was purchased, that wooded lot, I, I got up one morning and I, I heard the chainsaws going, and in very short order, every single tree on that lot was gone. And in addition, a couple of trees on my lot were gone as well. That was followed by some very large trucks digging in lots of fill because the lot had a slope, and a truckload after truckload after truckload of fill, and now I was being buried by this stuff because lots of that fill was drifting over onto my property. To make a long story short, there were a lot of other very stressful situations which yes, had me losing sleep. I talked to an attorney. I was here in Town Hall trying to get some satisfaction. I tried the building department, and what did I finally do? I finally made a very smart decision. I, I got rid of all that hassle, I got rid of all that stress, I made a very... I got rid of all that hassle, I got rid of all that stress, I made a very, another, very positive move. I moved to a new house in Falmouth. I started looking around and I found there's lots of very beautiful homes available in this town. And I think the neighbors, if they're given the opportunity, would start very quickly coming into line and say, me next, please buy my house. I think I'd read in the paper somewhere that Mr. Anderson, one of the neighbors closest to the, to Wind One, had said, please buy my house. So I suggest to you, certainly one of the mitigating options is to give these opportunity, people an opportunity to sell their house at a fair price so that they suffer no economic loss and have an opportunity to get on with their lives and do so sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Leslie?
The neighbors that feel they are affected, there's only one option that will serve them. Those people who feel that climate change is inevitable and in a few years, we're going to have the climate of Hilton Head, South Carolina, and we're not going to have to worry about searing in the heights because the heights are going to be underwater, nothing's going to please them. This issue has pulled the entire town of Falmouth down into quicksand. It doesn't matter which option you choose, it's going to court. We all know that. So what I urge you to do is make a decision, do what you can, and then turn it over to the court. Because what's happening now is it's neighbor against neighbor, and we can have meeting and we can have meetings and we can have another facilitator and we can have another $300,000 committee and we can spend another 20 years studying this. It's not going to change because people have agendas and unfortunately, we're not coming together. I urge you to make a decision and turn it over to the courts. I hate to say that, but I'm afraid that's the only thing that can happen. And I'm sorry to be a pessimist. Thank you.
Linda?
When I entered this evening, I thought I might reflect the sentiments of Judy Stetson and Robert Laird, who I thought spoke eloquently and shared my beliefs. But then I finally got it. I looked at the recommended motion or options. It's all about the money. Folks, it's all about the money. That's the priority here. It's about the money and it's about expediency. Okay? So you know what I suggest? Run them 24/7. As a matter of fact, if you can find a few more hours, run them another five. Okay? Run them in the winter, run them in the summer, run them in the thunderstorm, tornado, hurricane, run them. Get all that money to mitigate. But I'll tell you this, when you vote, when you vote, you vote unanimously. You put your signatures on that vote. And management, you put yours also because when the final chapter is written on these turbines and they fall, all of you should go.
Neil?
Neil Anderson, 211 Blacksmith Shop Road. Boy, has that number got to haunt me. Falmouth, Blacksmith Shop Road. Anyway, one question that I would really like to get answered tonight. What is this board going to do if you decide to run the turbines more than they are currently operating to reduce the nighttime sound impact levels to below MAST DEP's 10 dBA threshold? What are you going to do and when are you going to do that?
That's a decision we'll make once we're done taking public comment.
I just need to get that to the DEP also. I, thank you.
Good evening. Sharon Edie, I live at 145 Blacksmith Shop Road. I've heard a lot tonight and all I can say is that people who don't live near them, bottom line, don't have to suffer. That's the bottom line. I have well documented from my doctors, I never had vertigo in my life, had a year and a half of it after the turbines went up. And then it subsided when they did the 1212. Okay? So what I'd like to say to the people who want to run it 24/7 is they have no clue. They're clueless. Okay? And I don't believe that they should force people out of their homes that they've worked so hard. And I put 21 years into that property and I love it and I don't believe I should have to be putting up with this. Thank you.
Mr. Cool? Anyone else?
For the benefit of the TV audience and those that are here, I've submitted to the selectmen a copy of the MAST DEP letter dated June 15, 2012. It regards two conditions set forth by MAST DEP required to be satisfied before Wind One could be operated at nighttime or before any implementation of fine-tuned nighttime hours of operation, less than 12 hours. Specifically, and I quote, "Wind One will not operate, will not be operated during nighttime hours unless and until steps are taken to reduce nighttime sound impacts above the MAST DEP's guidelines." And number two, I quote, "The town may seek to fine-tune these hours of operation based on future data collection indicating the turbines can be operated in compliance with the guidelines." According to the three alternative reports submitted by staff, it cited that the wind turbine options process found a promising mitigation option to be considered was interior sound insulation. The report number two further states, "Sound easement acquisition plan is an affirmative response to the complaints of neighbors. Town council recommended that a responsible resolution must include mitigation components." Citing the WTOP's reference of interior sound insulation could be argued to satisfy the MAST DEP's requirement to, of specifying or the fine-tuning time hours of operation that will be based on future data collection. However, reading the real WTOP report, page 11, and I quote, "The WTOP ultimately did not agree on the value of offering insulation to neighbors as a form of mitigation." In other words, future data was collected, but sound insulation was not deemed of value for mitigation. Therefore, that makes the DEP's provision not being met and the fine-tuning of the nighttime hours of operation shouldn't be considered. Might be argued that the sound easement acquisition plan would satisfy the requirement specifying steps to be taken to reduce nighttime sound impact. I would say no, since the only remaining step is the purchase of properties and since the WTOP found that insulation was not agreeable nor of value. So let me close by saying during a discussion about when to allow public comment at a selectman's meeting, it was noted by a selectman, we have to find or we need to have something meaningful for people to comment on. Well, it's time. It's time it's understood in Falmouth that a good night's sleep is profoundly meaningful. It has nothing to do with politics, revenue, or deficits, especially when it concerns our children. It's time selectmen acknowledge all the information and all the evidence. Raise my taxes, if you must, to avoid the wind turbine deficit. Do it equitably, but please do not adopt any operating plan that violates the conditions set forth by the MAST DEP. And please don't expect a few neighbors to shoulder the unfortunate and unexpected mistake made by the many. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Moriarty. I live in 93 Lower Road. Town meeting member, Precinct Six. It's obvious here tonight that many, many of my friends and neighbors and citizens of Falmouth are suffering. Life under the blades is absolutely no life at all. There's no question that that's what's going on in our town. Infrasound has been studied, it's been, it was discovered 30 years ago by NASA. There is no, there is only one known way to mitigate infrasound, and that is distance. Either the turbines go or the neighbors go. That is the only way to mitigate infrasound. I repeat this one more time because I've spent many, many years trying to educate public officials, elected officials, DEP agencies. We've gone, we've gone over this, we've gone over this situation in many, many states in New England. It's the same story. The governor knows what's going on. The President of the United States of America, President Obama, knows exactly what's going on in Falmouth, Massachusetts. NASA knows what's going on in Falmouth, Massachusetts. The DEP knows, the Massachusetts, I mean, Falmouth Board of Health, every agency knows. Everyone in this room knows what's going on. I mean, the secret is called infrasound. Can everybody say it with me one more time so everybody knows? It's called infrasound. That is the problem here. It's not my neighbors, it's not how much taxes that we're going to have to raise to settle to this problem. I mean, the problem is, it's known and the solution is known. It's distance. So either the turbines go or the neighbors go. And there is nothing really to discuss. And this will all be settled in a court of law because I'm sorry, folks, the horse has already left the barn. There's nothing you folks can do at this table right here. This is all going to be settled in a court of law. So my suggestion here tonight to you is the best course of action for this situation is no action at all. You run the turbines 12 hours a day, which they shouldn't be run at all, in my opinion, but we, the taxpayers of Falmouth make up the difference and eventually, a judge is going to decide. And hopefully, we will get the right judge. Thank you.
Malcolm?
I was in Barnstable Superior Court last Tuesday as a party in the town, as a party in the town of Falmouth versus the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals, Neil Anderson's nuisance case. That's the, for those of you who don't know, that's the Superior Court case where the town is suing itself. How crazy is that? Many people out there must think it's a needless waste of taxpayer money. Nevertheless, during the court hearing, I learned two things. Number one, the state has responsibility for Falmouth Wind Turbine, Wind One. And number two, the high level of importance that the court places on irreparable harm. Number one, the state is responsible for Wind One. During the hearing, Falmouth Town Council Frank Duffy gave the judge some background information about the involvement of the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center and Falmouth Wind Turbine, which the Commonwealth previously owned. Falmouth Town Council told the judge, they gave it to the town and basically told us to put it up. And that's word for word. Now, now there, right in court, Town Council Duffy confirmed what many voters in Falmouth already suspected, the town's complicit, the state's complicit role in citing Wind One. Back in May, we know that the referendum asking Falmouth taxpayers to pay to take down the turbines was defeated. And the reason the referendum failed? The voters of Falmouth weren't dumb enough to pay for the governor's mistake. I've spoken with the governor several times, but he doesn't seem to want to take responsibility for an ugly mistake by his mass clean energy center. He needs to hear it from you. Now that Frank Duffy's let the cat out of the bag, it's time for you to straighten up, place the blame squarely where it belongs, on the governor's desk. Tell Governor Patrick, come down, pick up your turbines, and make restitution to the town. Make our town's wind turbine problem go away and make us whole again. On the second item, the Superior Court places a high level of importance on irreparable harm to wind turbine neighbors. In the same hearing on Tuesday, Town Council Frank Duffy tried to talk about the money the town will lose, the same money you've been talking about and are going to talk about again after this public comment is closed. Well, Superior Court Judge Muse wasn't interested in the money. He cut short Town Council Duffy. He said money was unimportant. Judge Muse wanted to know about the neighbor's health. He zeroed in on irreparable harm. He asked, what irreparable harm would be sustained by Neil Anderson, a wind turbine neighbor, with continued turbine operation? He wasn't even asking about additional harm caused by extended hours of operation, just the harm caused by the current operation. Now you heard tonight Kelly Souza talk about her second-year-old, her second-grade son. He doesn't get a chance to do that again. He has second grade once. He, if, if the turbine harms him in second grade, that is irreparable. And the judge is going to be very interested in that, very interested. Now, selectmen, you know the harms to neighbors caused by the wind turbines. You've heard the testimony from wind turbine neighbors over and over and over. Forty-seven neighbors testified to the harm in the public hearing before the Board of Health. The same Board of Health wrote you the letter on September 5th that expresses the Board of Health's concern for any increase in wind turbine operation which you are considering tonight. The Board of Health asked you to give the utmost, quote, "The utmost consideration to sleep interruptions of the health of the wind turbine neighbors." That's your own Board of Health warning you. Selectmen, by your action to curtail wind turbine operation to the current seven-to-seven schedule, you acknowledged that the wind turbines are causing harm to neighbors. You acknowledged that harm again when you voted to turn off the wind turbines for Thanksgiving and Christmas last year. Selectman Murphy, you acknowledged it to the Cape Cod Times when you said it would give, quote, "A little relief to the, for the holidays." So before you cast your vote for any increase in wind turbine operation, each of you, selectmen, ask ask yourself these two questions. Number one, will my vote cause neighbors irreparable harm? Number two, by my vote, will I knowingly be causing intentional harm? Remember, someday you may be required to testify in Superior Court yourself to these questions. Tonight, you have the opportunity to buttress your case either way. These options before you don't make any sense because neighbors were harmed. You decided in April that the best thing was to take the turbines down. Has that harm gone away? Will the harm be lessened by increased operation? For the wind turbines, neighbors, and for yourself, do the right thing.
Christina?
Good evening. My name is Christina Rowley, and I live in Woods Hole. And I think we've all been hearing a lot about noise. And we've heard people say, "We must be fair about this." And so what I would ask is that you do be fair about this, and you think about the noise all around town, all of the noises that we hear. We know that many parts of town, there is high noise, and that also infrasound is an issue. We have taken measurements in different parts of the town where we've gotten 93 dBA. And that's in the areas of town where there is a lot of traffic. And it's coming down and around, not just along Woods Hole Road, but it spills out along the way, and it goes around 28 back to Hyannis, and it goes down Jones Road on the way to the Stop &amp; Shop. And these areas, you find very high decibel readings. So we have to take this into consideration. And the people who live along these lines, along these areas, are also losing sleep. And we just lose sleep for a lot of reasons. And sometimes, you wake up even from a dream, and your heart is pattering around, your heart is beating very strong. That is infrasound. Infrasound occurs in a heartbeat. And so I ask you all to think about that, to be fair, and to understand a little bit more about infrasound is very, very important in all of these decisions. But we are people here, and it really troubles me to say, "Oh, we hear." So many people saying, "The only way we can deal with this is through litigation." And I think so strongly that this is only one of the changes that we are going to have to make to really deal with the issues that are coming through climate change. This is just one of them. And we must learn how to deal with these and deal with them seriously, and to really respect each other. All of us are dealing with noise and different effects from climate change. And all of us are dealing with a lot of health effects from the big semis, not only in noise, but also in the air pollution. And so who of us can really think of, any one of us, if we look at our lives, we probably will, all of us experience a lot of cases of cancer, if not personally, in our own lives, in the lives of those we love and care for, in our families, and around here, and in our neighborhoods. These are very real and substantiated cases of ill health and the effects of that way of living which we have now that cause ill health effect. So we really need to take all of this into consideration, and thank you for all of your care and thoughtfulness in this.
Vest? Anyone else want to get on the list?
I guess I have to speak off the cuff, but I can.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Thank you. My name is Frank Shepherd, Precinct 1. I've lived here a long time. Wasn't born here, but I've lived here more than 40 years. I've seen selectmen come and go. Mainly, our selectmen are to be trusted and thanked for their hard work, often difficult work, often work like this, in which they're on the horns of a dilemma, which has separated the town right down the middle. Thank you for that. Sometimes tough decisions have to be made. Sometimes they require courage. And in this particular instance, the next people to step up with some courage will be our Board of Selectmen. Okay? So I like courage. I expect it, and so do the rest of us. But this isn't only a dilemma for the selectmen. It's a dilemma for the town. We have big financial issues in front of us, water, wastewater. Are we to turn into a fractious town divided against itself on this issue, and then the next one, and then the next one? Because we cannot learn how to take care of ourselves as one town, one town, standing for itself, not so many villages separated from each other. And what did John Paul Jones say, Brent? "United we stand, divided we fall." We have to stand united. We have to support our neighbors. You know, I didn't have axes to grind in this. I don't live close to Blacksmith Shop Road. I came to it, as many people have, as an interested outsider, interested in the credibility or the lack of credibility of the people that were complaining. I went up there when the winds were over 20 knots, which is, you know, high, gusting higher, out of the north-northeast. Well, it sounded to me like a Blackhawk helicopter hovering over the house I was at, which was Neil Anderson's. We could not talk to each other outdoors. I'm not a crazy. I'm not delusional. I have not been subject to mass hypnosis or any of the other things that the platonic, pipe-smoking philosophers from outside of that area have called our neighbors crazy, deluded. I'm sorry. They're the ones deluded. They've never been up there. If they were up there and heard that, they would not be saying the things that they are. None of them would tolerate a Blackhawk helicopter hovering over their outdoor lawn at party for five hours, let alone 12 or 16 or 24. The options on the table at the moment are really, I don't think any of them are going to come to bear. There is an option on the table which will save face for our Board of Selectmen. Our town managers will satisfy the Blacksmith Shop neighbors and will satisfy the people concerned about their tax rate. Okay? It has two parts. Part A, shut the turbines off. They don't belong there. Part B, sue Vestas. Vestas deluded us. And when you sue Vestas, name the state of Massachusetts in the suit. I don't know if we can sue them directly or not, but they should be named because they were among the parties that misled us as a town, misled our managers, our town managers, misled our Board of Selectmen, and misled us as citizens. They deserve to be sued, and that would be an act of courage in which many other communities around this country would greatly appreciate our taking that very courageous act. I have it on, I cannot name names, I'm sorry. I've talked to two GE engineers who have described the siding of those turbines as, quote, "insane." Their words were, "It's insane for them to have placed them there." These are GE working engineers. Naturally, I cannot use their names. They're not speaking in the name of GE, and they don't want to lose their jobs. But they also did say that it would be very easy to find engineers that would testify as to the insanity of placing those turbines where they have been placed. We were all deluded. It's not just Heather. Julian wasn't even here. It's not just our selectmen. It's the townspeople, too. We were sold a bill of goods, and if somebody has to be held to account, it should be Vestas. Thank you.
To the Board of Selectmen, thank you for your hard work. I just want to say that I think wind is wonderful and welcome in the right place. Deserts of California, prairies, big farms, mountains. Not here. And I want to say that we were too early because I think Massachusetts is trying to get some regulations now that would make it easier to make decisions about placing wind turbines. But the problem we have is that the state didn't have any regulations, and therefore, we didn't have any regulations that we had to follow. So we went ahead and did what we did. It was a mistake. And it's very simple. It's just a matter of being too big and too close. That's all.
And it would help, folks, if anyone's interested in speaking, let me know. Raise your hand, and please focus your comments. Help us out. You know, we do have these options here we have to consider.
Brian Alder, Blacksmith Shop Road. I agree with Frank Shepherd. Aside from that, the idea that you're going to run these machines to create money to mitigate the problem is like a psychosis where the mother makes her child sick so she can cure it. It's insane. So what you've got to do, the CEC was tripping over themselves to give you money to put these machines up. You've got to press them for mitigation money and leave the machines alone how they are now, press the CEC for mitigation money, and then you can mitigate and then turn the machines on to your will. But to turn the machines on now and continue the harm, how can you justify that? Thank you.
Hi, Dan Webb, Precinct 6. First, I would just like to agree with what Dr. Woodwell said about climate change and the seriousness of that. I've heard the words "do no harm" mentioned repeatedly tonight. The harms of climate change ought to be considered. And surely, someone will say, "Well, a couple of wind turbines won't solve the world's climate change problems," and we can all agree with that. But we have a moral obligation to do what we can. And on Cape Cod, we also have the finest wind resource in all of New England and a centuries-long history of using it. When Thoreau wrote his book Cape Cod, he wrote, "The most visible objects on the landscape were a distant windmill." Those windmills were smaller, but if those people could have built a bigger, more powerful one, they certainly would have. I've heard it mentioned here tonight that these windmills were sited in an insane manner. Well, I have some experience in this industry, and I can tell you there is absolutely no truth in that statement. The state of Massachusetts D O E R has a model bylaw. It includes a setback requirement for large wind turbines of three times their tip height. For the town's machines, that would be 1,197 feet. Do you know the number of homes within that setback radius of these machines? Zero. There is not one home in Falmouth located within that setback radius specified by the state's model bylaw, which is based on widely-used international standards. Falmouth is not the first town to ever install a wind turbine. This has been done around the planet for many years, and it's also been done elsewhere in Massachusetts. In Hall, there is a 1.8-megawatt machine known as Hall 2, and it is much closer to the nearest homes than any of these large turbines in Falmouth, and they have no problems with it. In Gloucester, they have a 2.5-megawatt turbine on a 100-meter tower, and two 2-megawatt turbines, also closer to the nearest homes, also with no problems. And in Gardner, Massachusetts, Mount Wachusett Community College has two 1.65-megawatt turbines. And if that number, 1.65-megawatt, sounds familiar, it's because those turbines are Vestas Model V82, the exact same machines that we have here in Falmouth. And they are nearer to a hospital than the setback distance to homes in Falmouth, and they have no complaints. So there's some funny things going on here that are very hard to figure out, but the fact that machines that are identical to Falmouth and machines that are much larger than anything in Falmouth are operating in closer proximity to homes without any problem suggests to me that some of these complaints may be very squishy, and further investigation would certainly be worthwhile using a scientific basis. We have in the room here tonight two of the five medical doctors that sent this board a letter saying that they were skeptical that Falmouth wind turbines cause any health effects. From my own personal experience, my office is 600 feet from the Notice Tower, which my company owns. So I work every day at one-third the distance to the nearest home. Now, I don't live there, and I don't sleep there, at least not very often. I never once have heard that machine inside my office, and I know what I'm listening for, and I have a quiet office with an exterior wall and a window facing the machine. The only way I can tell whether or not that machine is spinning is by looking at my computer screen. Sometimes I'll think, "Oh, I hear it." And I'll realize, no, it's the air conditioning compressor, or it's the heat, or it's something else. I have a big vegetable garden directly at the base of my tower, right under the blades. I'm often up there with my five-year-old and six-year-old children, and our dogs. My wife is a gardener who works there. None of us are feeling any ill effect or any vibration or any suffering. And I mean no disrespect whatsoever to anyone who feels they are suffering. All I can say is that, in my personal experience, working within sight of Wind 1 and Wind 2 and Notice, I don't hear anything, and I don't feel anything, and neither do the people who work in the same building as I do. So I would agree with the suggestions made earlier of maximizing operation in order to maximize the mitigation fund. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Andrew Pottem. I am Falmouth representative to the Cape Cod Commission. I didn't think I was going to speak tonight, but you all convinced me to. but you all convinced me to. Someone once told me, "With great power comes great responsibility." And it's funny that I'm staring at the individual right in front of me who told me that because he's one of the wisest individuals in my life, which would be my father. But at the same time, we've got to understand something here, and that is that this is a very difficult decision for these individuals to make. You know, I really don't give much credibility, and no offense to the speakers who spoke tonight. Everyone is very passionate about this issue. But I don't give much credibility to the argument of, "Well, I don't feel it, so it must not be real." Well, that's how we did things. Then, "I don't feel it. That must not be real." Or, "I didn't get sick, so that disease must not be real." Well, then, the scientific and medical community would be in some pretty big trouble right now. I was raised, most of my childhood, not by my father, actually, but by my great-grandfather. God rest his soul. He passed away a couple months ago. Robert Rodrick of East Falmouth, a man who put his heart and soul into this town. Heart and soul. And by his loving wife, my great-grandmother, God rest her soul, Irene Rodrick. And if there's anything I learned from them growing up, anything, of all the things I could pick, the one thing I would pick to share with you tonight is that you do not treat your neighbors like you are treating them right now. They would be rolling in their graves to see Falmouth divided like this, a place that they were both born in, raised in, died in, a place they gave their sweat, blood, and tears for. And I'm so thankful to be raised by them, so thankful. Because I agree with that little piece that they gave to me and shared with me in their lives. You do not treat your neighbors like this. There are people suffering. And yes, some of us may feel the effects, and some of us may not feel the effects. My sister can't sleep at night when there's noise. I can. In fact, I can't sleep at night unless there's noise. If it's quiet, I am bound to be in trouble. But if it's noisy, she's bound to be in trouble. We don't all feel the same things, ladies and gentlemen. Our bodies are not all built the same. And the things we're talking about, such as infrasound, they're real. And people are affected in a real way, and some people are not affected at all. We don't all have the same skin color. We are not all built the same. Our bodies don't look the same. We certainly don't act the same. We're all human, but we're each individually very different from one another. Stop treating our neighbors like this, ladies and gentlemen. You know, I'm 23 years old. I thought, growing up and becoming an adult, meant that you acted like an adult. So let's act like adults. Do the right thing. There's someone in the State House who's not owning up to his bad mistakes, and that shouldn't fall on us. Make the right decision. Get rid of the problem, and help out your neighbors.
Anyone else? My list is empty, folks, if anyone wants to speak.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, and thanks. It's a... I really appreciate the work you're doing, the challenge before you, and going through this problem. And I think you're doing it in a very systematic...
Ron, could you identify yourself?
Oh, sorry. I'm Ron Zweig. I'm from Precinct 1. Thank you. Again, I think you're doing a great service to the community by looking at this very carefully. And I think that as you progress, and you've had, I know, tons of information come to you, tons of hearings, listening. And tonight, I think it's come to an important crossroads. But I think that one of the things we have to keep in mind very clearly is that wind turbines are new, and there's a lot of science now that basically has analyzed them in terms of health effects and other impacts, and other studies that have been done. And if we look at basic science, we base our lives largely on science and physics. And there's been discussion tonight about NASA, NASA study, but we all... Many of us remember watching the television as the Apollo program went to the moon. It's based on science, it's based on fact. And that's how it happened. We were all concerned, watching that landing the first time, and seeing whether Neil Armstrong would end up sinking right into the soil and disappearing, or whatever. So I think that if we look at that and we go back to the different studies that have been done, scientific studies and carefully-analyzed studies, we find a picture that adds to your challenge because you hear a conflicting view to the science and to the findings. And if we look at the January 2012 Mass DEP health study, in it, there was no definitive indication that there were health impacts from wind turbines. There could be a possibility, but basically, there are no findings from any health studies that have shown that. Then if we look at the situation here in Falmouth, and we look at our turbines, and we look at the measurements that were done by DEP, the greatest exceedance above ambient was... Well, the greatest measurement above ambient was 11.9 decibels, measuring the turbines off versus the turbines on. During that same night, measurements were taken with the turbines off, and again with the turbines off. And instead of 11.9 decibels as a difference, it was 18.2. So the exceedance of background compared to background is actually outside of DEP guidelines, without any turbine running. Another study that was done, and it's been talked tonight about infrasound, and I'd like everyone to look. If you can Google, you can Google the Victoria... The state of Victoria study specifically on infrasound from Australia. And they found no impacts and no indication from that. And that study is from May of this year. Another study came out in August. And this is an interesting study because it's more of a correlational study. And in that study, this is a Lawrence Berkeley study on home values in the vicinity of wind turbines. They looked at 50,000 home sales, near 76 wind farms in nine states and 27 counties. And they found... And as well as almost 1,200 within a mile of wind farms. And they found no impact on home values based on that study. Now, if that can be correlated, it means the impacts to other factors, health and others, could very well be minimal or not in that context. So it makes it... It's difficult because we all internalize, and we feel the relatively small group that has come out from the neighborhoods up there and spoken out again and again, a small percentage, about 20 households around, or 19 households within a half-mile of Wind One and Wind Two, of which there are 168 households. Now, if we can deal with that as a community and deal with those people that have concerns and work with mitigation, and run these turbines, get that capacity, and to help them out, I think that is the way to go. I think that the only option, really, is to do that and to really run them full-time for the manufacturer's specifications. Thank you.
Hilda Mengay. I live in Hatchville. I wasn't planning to speak, but I got inspired. I come from Holland, and most people know there are lots of windmills in Holland for ages. I don't know if anybody has been in a windmill, inside the windmill, when the wind... When they turn, the old-fashioned windmills. It's a huge noise. They have lived with this for centuries. Now they're switching over to exactly the same turbines we have here. I have been there last week. And the windmills, as big as here, they're placed as close as from that wall, actually closer than that wall, to the homes. I can be next to one of those homes and see probably 15 others, home, next home, home, that close to the home. Not a mile, not a half-mile, feet away from the home, that big. Somehow, it must work there. I don't know why. I haven't studied it. But it's not just a few. It's hundreds of them, thousands of them. And if it's that bad, there wouldn't be increasing in numbers. But people would get sick of them, right? And apparently, they're not. So that is just my view of what I see in my own country. The science is telling us that we have to reduce our CO2 emissions greatly immediately if we want to see a future for our kids, grandkids, and the future of the planet. And we have to do that now, in huge amount. We have to do this, like 80% reduction in 20 years if we want to see the levels of sea rise be less than three feet by the end of the century. Can you imagine how much suffering we will introduce here if we don't change our mind right now? And the windmills are just one tiny bit. So beside the wind... If we take the windmills down and we increase our wastewater plant and make it bigger, and we increase the consumption of fossil fuels to run a bigger water treatment plant, we keep increasing and increasing and increasing, we will damage the planet and our future so hugely that we will all be suffering immensely. And maybe, yes, we are old enough. It doesn't matter to me anymore. But our kids and grandkids, and if you travel around the world, the suffering that we cause in America, because we are so well-suited here on the Cape and in the States, we don't notice the damage that we cause on other planets, other parts of this planet. And Africa is suffering already greatly. I just came back from it. There is no water. There are whole huge rivers, no water because of what we are doing to the planet. And we are using five times as much as anybody else. I just want to make sure...
Please focus on...
I know.
The turbines, the options here.
And the option is to run it 24 because that is our only option we really have right now in if we want to keep this planet in any kind of health for the future. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Alex Callum Murphy. I live in Blacksmith Shop Road. I'm not exactly sure what I'm going to say, but regarding putting on 24/7, I mean, then the man says, "Then test them." You know, and see what the issues are. Unless you have a way to do that, I think that's impossible because, I mean, you people won't even come out to my house when I call you at night and say they're running. So it isn't like they run. When they're pounding my home and bothering my children, I can't even talk to a town meeting, a town member. You know, different people here told me they'd come out. They didn't even answer my phone call or return a call. So, I mean, if you're going to... I'm going to call you up and say they're killing me right now, and no one will come out, nobody will test them, you don't have a way to test them. You know, everyone's saying the world, everything. But you guys are a selectmen of the town of Falmouth. Help us. Help my kids. You know, when they try... When I put them to bed at night and I read them a story and the walls are pounding. You know, I don't want to... I don't want to be bought out. Tell me where I can go. You know, I put my heart, my sweat in there. You can give me $500,000, $600,000. I can't replace what I have. So you can knock me out of work, knock me out of my house, knock everything out I did. You know, it's pretty disgusting. Everyone said, "Oh, people grew up here." I grew up here. I was the fourth baby born in this town. Fourth baby born in Falmouth Hospital. And that was like the proudest thing. I used to go around and tell everybody that. They said, "No way, fourth baby in Falmouth Hospital?" But now, it's like disgusting. I'm like ashamed of that now. So do the right thing. Help the people of Falm... Help the neighbors. Treat us like you'd want your grandchildren or your children to be treated. You know, do you want to put them to bed at night with all that noise pounding? Do you want to walk out in the yard and have it echoing through? Responsible people that run turbines. I call some of the people that run turbines. They don't even return my phone call. He says responsible. It's not that we're responsible. So be responsible and do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? Anyone else?
John Goldman, Precinct 1. I've lived in Falmouth for seven, eight years now. But I've been... My family's been in Falmouth, in Woods Hole, for 50 years, 60 years. I grew up in Philadelphia, a city, a big city. Every night, probably 15 to 20 sirens, it scared the hell out of me when I was a kid. I live on Woods... Right off of Woods Hole Road. I can't go outside my house without tremendous noise all day. I'm at home all day. I'm an artist, and I work at my house. I hear down on Hui and down at the Coast Guard docks, that backup noise. Beep, 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 all day. All day. Okay? Do I complain about that? No. I grow up. I go one step at a time through my life, like probably many of you do. Doesn't matter which side of this equation we're on. You are to be thanked because it is a hellish job, clearly, as I've even told some of you. But I don't understand a lot of the comments tonight if they're specific to the recommendations as opposed to more venting that seems to only divide this town. I'm a big, big believer in bringing us all together. I'm not sure how that can be done. But I don't hear the specific addresses to these specific items that you're talking about. Because as I get it, you are going to deliberate these particular items, not necessarily anything that anybody else has said tonight. Yes, we get a chance to say our piece. That's great. But the reality is, these are the recommendations. And unless there is some kind of forward step, we're moving very, very, very much in a circle. And we need healing. And I... I'm sorry to say, I don't hear that healing tonight. I only hear more divisive behavior, a little bit of patronizing behavior from both sides. But the bottom line is, the world is changing. It's the one thing we know. It is changing. Some will believe in that change, some won't. And it's a matter of not my grandchildren, but my great-grandchildren. I'm clued in to my great-grandfather in Louisiana, okay? If I don't think about seven generations from my own, which is how the Native Americans think of it, then I'm doing a disservice. So it's not about my sleep. Frankly, my wife, I hate to tell... Say this, snores. Okay? She's going to kill me.[1659.42] But I have these things called earplugs, and I put them in every night. If I don't, I wake up. So that's basically all I wanted to say was, we need to grow up. We need to pull our pants up and go forward. So in terms of your individual recommendations, I'm not sure I know enough, I don't think that there's enough data that is understood evenly from everybody. And I'm, I am hopeful that at least some parts of what has been said tonight is digested, and maybe it's not the last opportunity for options, whatever that is. So thank you again for your hard work.
I snore too.
Good evening. Catherine Elder, Blacksmith Shop Road. Just have a couple of comments specifically about the options that you're considering here tonight. None of these options show any sort of compromise or mitigation in terms of what would help neighbors be able to cope with particularly the most egregious of the conditions that occur, which is disturbance of sleep. There's no moral basis to increase the nighttime hours of operation because of that, and none of these four options address that. So my few comments are that first, there should be a compromise option being considered by you tonight, and that compromise option is the one that we're living in already, twelve on, twelve off. Your options have no compromise financially for the town, and all of the compromise is the burden of the people who are being negatively impacted. So none of those four options are really meeting anybody's needs, and I agree with all the comments before that talk about how you don't harm somebody and then pay them off for creating the harm. I mean, it just makes no sense, it's some very circular logic going on there. The other comment I have is that the Board of Health really should be consulted in these deliberations, and I know that they sent a letter to you September fifth pointing that out, and to this date, I have not seen or heard any discussion by this board regarding their input. And I would ask that you please address that in your deliberations tonight. Thank you.
Jed Goldstone, Chairman of the Board of Health and Town Meeting Member for Precinct Four. Our concern as the Board of Health, as has been stated in a letter, I want to amplify some of those concerns and add some fuzziness to them. It is from our understanding, both as scientists and as citizens who have been reading the literature extensively, that it's, this is a matter of epidemiology, which means uncertainty, human effects, which are individual effects. And we are really entangled with, by the fact that there's a significant lack of data. We just don't have sufficient information to make an informed decision from the perspective of public health. And I think we make some of that clear in our letter, and in any decision that you make that changes the operational characteristic of the turbines will require us, by our prior decision, to reopen discussion of this in terms of our deliberations. So we will, would happy to be open a continued dialogue with the selectmen and invite any and all members of selectmen in the town administration to talk with us. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to add? Anything new?
I would make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
A motion and a second to close public comment. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. So at this point, ladies and gentlemen, the board needs to deliberate the options we have in front of us, and to, as noted here, come up with some decisions. While I understand that a lot of folks are concerned about the idea of money taking precedence over public health, there is an issue there that the board cannot ignore, and that is that, under the current operating plan, the turbines are losing the town money. And what it means to the neighbors, and I've said this to some of the neighbors in the past, is that as the town loses money, we've got to get it from somewhere. It was one of the reasons why we put forth the idea of taking down the turbines entirely, was to eliminate the option, eliminate the turbines, and deal with that problem all in one step. Going forward, the turbines are operating, we don't have the funds to take them down. We can't leave them sitting there, because we have obligations to the state, to bondholders, and to the federal government. And so something has to be done with respect to, unfortunately, the finances. And that is one of the reasons why we're in this sort of pickle we are now, as some folks have mentioned, we're between a rock and a hard place. And I guess with that, I'll see if there's anyone on the board who has any comments
I'd just like to make a few comments, and I surely am not ready on my behalf to make any decisions until I hear the rest of the board. I would like to say, first of all, that there is nothing in final, that there is nothing final in life, with the exception of death. Because in fact, things are always fluid and things can always change. If there is new information that comes forward, change can in fact occur. The vote and the issue that the Board of Selectmen moved forward this past spring, that was approved at town meeting, but failed at the ballot, provided the board with some direction. And that direction does include some financial ramifications. Those ramifications are the fact that we don't have the ability to act unilaterally without the funding source that moves us forward. I want to bring forward a couple of thoughts that have been brought up tonight, and when we talk about nighttime operation, nighttime operation defined from everything that I've been told is the hours between twelve midnight and four a.m. So those are some areas where, where I think that we have to remember when we're talking nighttime operation. The next issue that I want to talk about is mitigation. There's two ways to mitigate the situation. One would be in the form of payments to folks who live there, in the form of noise easements or purchasing their home. Or the other form of mitigation, if in fact we're talking about it, would be mitigating going from twenty-four seven, meaning that the board would come up with a mitigation plan that would curtail the operation. Depends on to what extent the board would come up with that mitigation plan of, do we combine that with other mitigation options, meaning options to the folks who live there that we could buy those noise easements and potentially buy some homes? Or do we just merely curtail the operation that would provide for a break-even scenario for the town, and that we mitigated without any additional funds that would go to the folks who live there? So those are some options that are on the table, at least for me. So that when we talk about mitigation, in my mind, we're not necessarily talking about making payments to folks. We could be talking about curtailment of the operations that would provide for a break-even. I think what folks said, and this is subject to interpretation, what folks said at the ballot box was that we're not going to pay fourteen million dollars to take these things down. So the interpretation is left back to everybody in this community, but unfortunately, only five of us are going to make that determination as we move forward. Because it's us five that are now, whether we want to or not, who are going to make that decision of what that ultimate ballot decision was. So that's where I'm, I wanted to make sure that, that I made the statement about the scenario of mitigation. Mitigation, to me necessarily, does not have to be that we build up a fund and pay for folks scenario there, whether it be noise easements or have a fund available to mitigate things like flicker or what have you. So I just want to put that out there.
To that end, and both to the audience and to my fellow board members, I would like us to still consider one option, which would be a higher mitigation than was proposed earlier. It would be below the eighty percent that they're talking about. We may have to go to the state and say, is that okay? If the state comes back and say, no, that's not okay, we're not going to forgive the wrecks, we're not going, we're going to allow the loan, the grant to be alone, we would then have to, that would change the issue. But if we went to the both turbines running sixteen hours and admitted that we were going to suffer a loss for four years, and then say that, that there is, you know, to Ms. Elder's point, that there is a compromise, that there is some price that some of the town is paying, because we know there's certainly a price that the residents feel that they're paying, and that everyone is paying something, saying, can we come together and live with that? And so while people are saying there are only four options on the table, in my mind, those are the four options we asked the staff to present what it would look like, because from those four options, we could make assumptions about what the other ones would look like, that we could make some mathematical deductions based on that information to be able to consider other things. And so I hope on the table would still be down to even the one that is the sixteen hours optimized, which I know is that what's considered the sixty-eight percent of maximum. But I hope that during our deliberations, that would be one that we could still argue
I think I'm the person that probably stood up as a running for selectman and said, I guess the question to me was, what do you think about the turbines? And I said immediately, those turbines should run twenty-four seven. Some people walked out of the place, didn't want to hear that answer. Other people told me that I needed to calm down on that decision. I haven't changed one bit. I have a feeling that the turbines bring revenues to this town that are needed. I have a feeling also that some people have a lot of difficulty with their health, and I have empathy for that. But I say that when a town comes to the point, the Falmouth is at right now, for three and a half years, we have heard a lot of words. The emails that I have received since I was elected in May are in the hundreds. When I went to town hall and asked, how many emails have come into town hall, and it's over seven hundred in a year? I went to the newspaper to see how many letters had been written to the editor concerning this, and they didn't keep track of that. So I am saying that probably there have been more words used concerning turbines than anything that we did at New Silver Beach, anything that we did with the Cranberry Boggs. And it comes down to a point of, I am living in a town that gives me the greatest pleasure. I love what happens in Falmouth. I love the variety of people, they're wonderful for each one of their personalities. We have very wealthy people, we have needy people, we have gorgeous homes. We live in a town with a very high IQ. And yet, when it comes to the point that someone has felt that they are offended, they are sick, they are, their life has changed because of a machine that arrived. And the day I heard that Falmouth was going to have this machine, and I thought it was only going to be one at that time, it turned out to be two, there was excitement. We got in buses and went up and looked at them. There was a feeling in Falmouth that was a wonderful thing that we have done. So when there's an accusing tone that says, you're only concerned about the money, it isn't my only concern, but it is my major one. And when I listen to people who are authorities so many times, I listen and I have not changed my mind. So when we take the vote tonight, you will see that I will vote in that direction. And I believe each one of us within our personalities and whoever was here as selectman previously, we will see where the votes are. But I appreciate everyone that came. I was embarrassed with some of the comments made, and, but, on the other hand, it was a very good evening for public comment.
Well, I want to go back to January of this year, my Board of Selectmen made that vote to take down the turbines. I thought that was the most incredible vote that was ever taken in all the years I've been on the board. I couldn't believe that we actually had come to that decision. And I saw it as an opportunity, perhaps, that maybe the town and the, and the neighbors could come together and possibly work out some solution. Of course, it was around that time, we had already gone through the WTOP process by then. But then when the ballot question came along, and the voters said no to authorizing the town to raise and appropriate money to take the turbines down, from the selectman's point of view, we, the selectman cannot vote to create a deficit. Any votes that we make, the money has to be there. So when we look at this situation now, there isn't any money. So our votes are going to be dependent upon how we find money to do what we need to do. We certainly aren't going to find fifteen million dollars to take the turbines down. But we can, through operating the turbines, come up with some, some funds, and we call them mitigation funds. But it's really, you know, we all somehow live in areas where we're affected by the environment around us, whether it's noisy or whether it's peaceful, it depends how lucky you are sometimes as to where you live. If you've been there a while and life was wonderful, then sometimes it can change. I've obviously been through that. So I think we need to get serious. I think the board needs to get serious about how it's going to raise the revenue to provide the mitigation that the neighbors are going to need if they choose and want to stay in their homes. Because it is, and that, those mitigations could be a new roof, they could be new windows, they could be interior, and I know you're all looking at me like, we don't want to hear that. But the point of the fact, point of fact is that we don't have the money to take them down. And we have to operate them so that they pay for themselves, because we don't have, we can't vote an operating plan that doesn't provide enough funding to operate the turbines. That again, goes back to that basic premise, we can't create a deficit, that we are not by law allowed to do that. We have fiduciary responsibilities to all the taxpayers of the town to operate within the law. So right now, we have to look at these options and say, how much can we operate the turbines so that they provide the revenue we need, not just to keep them going and maintaining them, but how are we going to operate them to get enough revenue to help the neighbors who want to get serious about mitigation? If you want to be serious about a new roof and insulation and windows and all of that, or if you really want to go to the last step, which is to actually sell your home so that you can go and buy a home somewhere else, I think that's where we are right now. That's what we have to get serious about, because at this time, we don't have any other options in front of us that I can see.
There's one thing that, you know, I came in here tonight with an open mind. I know that I was not really inclined to go with the extremes, but when we listen to public comment, I think we need to take the public comment for what it is and what people are saying and actually listen to them. The folks here tonight, speaking about mitigation, not a one of them did I hear them say, you know, buy my house. Not a one of them did I hear say, in the public comment, that I want some money to put up some new insulation. Not a one of them did I hear say, I want to buy shades so I don't have sea flicker. So what I got out of this mitigation was that they want us to come to the, to mitigate this situation to the best possible terms that, within our means, and within our means is to break even. Unfortunately, or as close as possible to that, to break even, without disrupting their lives and their sleep deprivation, or, you know, that's left to, that'll be left to the judges, I guess we're going to say, because some folks it affects, some folks it doesn't. So within that terms, I'm not looking for mitigation at this point in time, right now, after hearing this public comment, that the mitigation is going to be to buy people's houses. Because we could be there forever trying to buy some folks houses, and some folks, it's loud and clear that they want to stay in their homes. You know, those who know me, and those who know me well, know the values by which I live my life. And those values are that I love my neighbor as I love myself. And in regard to that, I And in regard to that, I, there are only, I'm not the wizard, and I continue to say that, but I'm not here to hurt anybody, and I'm here to try to make this town a better place to live. With that in mind, there is not going to please everybody by the decision we're going to make tonight. And probably not going to please anybody by the decision we make tonight, because that is going to be impossible. So I want to leave it at that. And I'm leaning towards this idea and the ideal of one of the options, as Mr. Jones says, that's not up there on that board. And that option is that not going to provide additional funds, that it would be an eight-hour operation, eight hours off, and we could come up with the times for that, probably ten to, ten to six AM. But that would not provide the town with a healthy financial picture. And I want folks to know that that's not going to be the case, at least what I'm thinking, and that would provide some hopeful help from the state. And again, nothing is final, because if the state comes back and says, we're going to pull the wrecks, and we're going to pull the funding, the air money, we'd have to go back to the drawing board again, folks. But I think I could support that, and I would make a motion to do an eight-hour curtailment and work with the state, because that would provide us ultimately with near as breakeven as we possibly can, and we would move forward. We would move forward with things that would be less obtrusive to try to curtail our carbon footprint, to potentially provide things like ESCO programs as we're moving forward, to provide solar arrays. We'll learn from our mistakes, and we'll move forward. But that's, would be my, that would be a motion that I would make.
Mr. Chairman? Could someone explain whether or not curtailing eight hours each day or only operating sixteen hours each day, does that get us to where we need to even breakeven, just to operate?
No.
I'm not sure, based on this chart.
If we look at the chart.
It shows a completely red deficit.
But don't forget that is putting two hundred thousand dollars. It's also putting away two hundred thousand dollars to reserve fund.
Where do you see that?
It's down in the assumptions underneath it. And if, instead of putting two hundred thousand dollars, we put away a hundred thousand dollars from this and a hundred thousand dollars from operating, which is where the town's saying, yep, we're paying a little bit, we're paying a price for it, that we could put a hundred thousand dollars from our operating budget every year to replenish that reserve. We have a million dollar reserve that we really feel to run these turbines is important. We can create that million dollars through this or through, we have three hundred dollars in certified free cash, which isn't committed yet, we could do it different ways. And then those reds don't have to be there.
Does that answer your question?
No, my question is, it doesn't provide any mitigation funds at all.
Right, I agree.
I don't think that's an option. I don't think that helps the neighbors at all.
Before we go too far, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. So let's focus on this motion right now and some discussion about this motion, which is the idea of sixteen, excuse me, sixteen hours on, eight hours off. Discussion on the motion.
I made my comments. I think it doesn't provide any opportunity for mitigation, and if we are going to help the neighbors, we solve the differences that they have with the noise, we need to have the funds to do that.
I just want to make another comment in regard to that mitigation. We had all along talked about the state potentially trying to help with other mitigation scenarios. This doesn't alleviate anything, us from still contacting the state, not only to forgive the wrecks, not only to forgive the grant and make it a grant, the air funds, but ask them for limited mitigation in areas where it's necessary. That's my statement in regard to that. My reasoning is, we have to mitigate it with money, and you can't buy happiness for some folks. You can't go to them and say, I'm going to give you this money. This is the best that we can possibly do. If these neighbors sitting in this audience and sitting out there looking at and saying to this board, any one of them, you know, I can look them in the eye and say, we have gone the extra mile. We have taken the efforts, as we did last spring, to go to the voters, to go to the ballot. I think this is fair, and I would also say to those neighbors, that you know that our hands are tied as we move forward. And each and every one of you, you want to sue us and you want to continue to battle those court deals after we've gone as far as we have, well, I don't think you're being a partner as we're moving forward. I think by what we're doing tonight, we're giving as far a partnership as we possibly can. So I'm going to challenge the neighbors to also understand that we're doing as best that we can with what we have.
The first thing that I would respond with that is that that was exactly what was said, that the state would help us out. And that was, there were other selectmen, another selectman here at that time, and they didn't. And I don't think that we can have, we can have another vote to depend upon the state to bail us out when the history with the state has not been on the positive side. And I think the other part is that we have a fiscal responsibility to make sure that the correct revenue is coming into the town, and it isn't either even or there isn't any money coming in. I don't think that's responsible at all. So I definitely would not be on the side of saying that we're waiting for the state for the second time and that there is no revenue that is coming in.
Yeah, the twenty-four by seven option, for me, I think was summed up very well. The idea that we're going to run the turbines more in order to generate money to mitigate the problem, it just, it's, as been said, circular logic. It's, we're sort of chasing our tail in that sort of situation. So I guess one of the problems that I have with the idea of running the turbines more in order to generate the funds is that it's, I understand that at this point, the idea of us taking down the turbines is probably off the table unless the state turns around and has a change of heart. The reality is, as we've gone to the voters, we've asked them to help with this, they've made a decision. How we justify that decision or how we, the logic that we use to say that they voted for this or they voted for that, I don't think we'll ever know for sure. Although, I have to say that the one thing that really bothers me about all that, and I've heard many times from folks who have said, you know, the people of Falmouth voted this way, and therefore the Board should do this. You know, that's democracy in action, but we don't live in a democracy. The reality is, is we live in a constitutional republic, and the founding fathers expressly avoided a direct democracy because they were concerned about the tyranny of the majority. And the irony, of course, is a lot of people talk about the fact that, you know, there's only a few homes that are affected. Well, when you're talking about thirty or forty or fifty neighbors, that's not really a few in my mind. And more importantly, I think it's important to look at this in the context of other situations. You know, a few years ago, there was a state referendum that called for what would essentially have banned gay marriage, and the legislature looked at that vote, and it passed. The state passed that popular vote, and the legislature looked at it and they set it aside for the very same reason, that it was tyranny of the majority. And I think in hindsight, we all look at that decision, and at the time, there were a lot of people upset by it, but in hindsight, we look at it and we say, you know what? That was what some people have said tonight. They talk about being a courageous decision, bucking the trend, bucking what the public is saying, do this, which would have effectively denied a minority their rights. And so I'm very cognizant about what we're doing here tonight and how this might affect, even if it is just a minority of families in Falmouth, how it's going to affect them. You know, we talk about irreparable harm. The twelve on, twelve off had a significant effect on the amount of emails and phone calls that this board, that the Board of Health, that the town manager's office got. And I think that's one of the things that we have to remember here. We talk about evidence of an issue, and I agree wholeheartedly with folks who have said that, from a scientific standpoint, yes, we're missing that information, we need more information. But there's a difficulty, at least in my mind, in terms of running the turbines more often and saying that, okay, we're going to do this in order to generate money to mitigate what's being felt, or we need to run them more often in order to find out what's going on. It just doesn't sit well with me to sort of put our neighbors through the idea of being guinea pigs and running experiments on them, just to try to figure out what's going on I will vote in favor of this motion. But I would also caution the Board, and Albert Einstein said, that insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. And I think one of the things, obviously, we're not going back to the people asking for money to take down the turbines, because to do so would be insanity. And I think we have to remember that we're going to go back to the state now and say, well, we've modified the operation of the turbines, but we still need your help and we still need your money. We might be exercising a little bit of insanity here.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm not going to vote for this motion. I think this motion just maintains the status quo. I don't think it shows any leadership. I don't think it moves us forward in any way. Doesn't move us forward in terms of our need to increase the operation of the, or increase the funding to operate the turbines, and it doesn't do anything to move the situation with the neighbors forward. It keeps them in the same status quo situation they've been in. I'm sure that we can come up with some other, some other ways to do this that are more, more constructive and would work better both for the town and for the neighbors, but I think this is just maintaining the status quo.
Mr. Murphy. I just want to say that to make money on these at this point in time, in my mind, in my ideal, is blood money. And if the state comes back and says, we're not going to participate, we're not going to forgive your wrecks, we're not going, well, you know, shame on them, because it is what it is, and then we'll have to go back and do it again. But at this point in time, there's other ways. Are we looking to make money on this to buy a new police cruiser? Are we looking to make money on this to subsidize some other part of our budget? I don't know. I don't agree with that at this time. And I don't think that's, we heard that we have a little free cash and that we're not pressed against the wall, and it's not about the money. So that's kind of where I am.
You know, the thing that is the saddest thing to hear you say, Mr. Murphy, is the fact that we are going back to the state, which is the very same cycle of negative that happened previously. And to have the motion and say that the state is going to give us some assistance, at least we're going to ask them, that we know, the state is not going to come in and give any assistance financially to Falmouth until Falmouth does it for themselves. And if they look at this vote and say, well, Falmouth's selectmen had an opportunity to take care of their own business without coming to us, and then to have a vote that we would say, no, we really are not interested in taking care of our own business, we want the state to take care of it for us, and I will say, I do not believe the state is going to do, to do that. I think that after all of the discussion and all the words, which I talked about earlier this evening, to be at the very same point that you were at a year ago shows no growth with the Board of Selectmen. There has got to be an issue that as much information as we have received to say, no, we don't need any money from the turbines. It is a stagnant place that you have put the Board of Selectmen to make a decision, and I will not vote for that motion, but it's a stigma in saying they can't get out of their own way. They were there a year ago, and they're back at it again.
Mr. Chair, if I could point the Board to the second page of the one we received tonight about all the estimated financials, it has all the red in it. It says, this is what's going to happen if we don't go back to the state and ask them for forgiveness of the wrecks or the transfer of the grant loan to being a grant. We have to go back to the state no matter what. Otherwise, we're in the red, and none of our proposals work. So we have no choice but to go back to the state and ask them for the wrecks and ask them that they make sure that the loan is a grant. Otherwise, running them twenty-four seven, we still lose a total of seventy, seven hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. So we're going back to the state to ask them for money.
All right, show me that one that says, I have it right here.
It's all red.
This one.
Yes.
And that is what happens if we don't go back to the state and ask them for forgiveness for the wreck and ask them to transfer, make that loan into a grant that we don't have to pay back. We've been assured by the town manager that the state seems to be willing to do those. Indications are, there's no promises, we never get promises from the state, but the indications are such that if we do the eighty percent of full, there's a strong likelihood we will get what we're asking for from the state. And my proposal is, let's push them a little bit more and see if they're willing to go down to sixty-eight percent. If they're not willing to go down to sixty-eight percent, we can't, I don't think, consider the option that I, that Mr. Murphy has moved. I just don't think we can do that, but I want to ask. I wanted to go to the state and say, this is what we feel might serve the residents the best. They have expressed no interest in getting financial remuneration. They have expressed no interest in having their homes insulated. They've expressed no interest in us spending money to buy their houses. They're not interested in that. There does seem to be a little bit more interest in reducing the hours of operation. They've begged us not to run them at night. That is a request for us to not run them as much as all the other options come, you know, suggest. Every other option does not give them more than six hours of quiet. And so I'm saying, if we can go to the state and put forward a strong argument, you were already considering the wrecks, you were already considering the air grant, if you can give us some more money to help with the mitigation, we can, again, but there's actually a chance for this to be acceptable to the residents, that the sighting of industrial turbines near residents could be acceptable, the state might say, boy, if that could make the problem kind of go away, that they might be willing to support.
I am saying, we could ask for some mitigation funds. I surely don't expect to see them. But, you know, I think we're on firm ground as a Board, that we're operating these turbines with an eight-hour curtailment. I think with the case with, in regard to mitigation, that we're in firm ground because the sound exceedances are between twelve midnight and four AM. We don't know on wind two whether there is a sound exceedance, because in fact, some of the folks who spoke tonight were truly correct, that we have not tested wind two between twelve and four AM. So this just broadens that, and to me, that's the mitigation. That's what we're moving forward. And quite candidly, you know, I use analogies a lot, and sometimes people don't like them, but if you don't ask, you don't know. You walk into a car dealership, he says, this is the price, and you make him an offer, and he accepts the offer, you're really damn happy he accepted it. But if you didn't make the offer, you don't know. And that's what I'm saying. I think we need to go to the state and say, this is what we're going to do. Eight hours curtailment, and we want the wrecks forgiven, and we want the air money, which we already know the federal government is okay with, but it's the state is saying no.
Any additional comments? Are you ready to vote?
I'd like the wording of the motion.
My wording is that we operate the turbines on an eight-hour curtailment and that we ask the state for forgiveness of the wrecks. ask the state for forgiveness of the REXs, as well as the conversion of the air money to a grant.
Any mitigation funds, or?
We'll ask for mitigation funds as well. That's right.
All right, so we can -- we'll address this first, and then there are other options here, the actions that have been asked of the board, and we'll talk about those in a moment, but I want to dispense with this motion first, so. Any last discussion on this? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
No.
Motion carries three-two. So that addresses the first bullet point, which is the operating scenario. Do we wish to engage a facilitator of any sort?
I believe that we just made a vote that doesn't allow us to have any funds, so it doesn't make any sense to have a vote to engage a facilitator, because there's no mitigation. The mitigation is all on the town side. So there isn't -- we didn't provide for any funding to mitigate the neighbors at all.
Well, let me remind the board that whether that money is there or not depends on the continued operation of the turbine. So at this point, we would have to -- if we were going to say that this money was going to come from the operation of the turbine, we'd have to be running that turbine for some length of time before the money would accumulate. So the assumption that I made, and perhaps the town manager can clarify for me, is that if we're going to engage a facilitator, that we might be able to fit that somewhere into the budget. And the assumption perhaps would have been that that money -- hold on. The assumption would have been that that money may have been repaid either from state funds that we're asking for the state, or from the continued operation of the turbine. But obviously, we would have to put the money up front first in order to make that sort of thing happen. And perhaps some clarification from the town manager about how we might engage or how we might pay for a facilitator.
Well, Mr. Chairman, certainly if this board, so ordained, you could seek to pay for the services of a facilitator from the general fund. The concept underlying what we brought forth to the board was that you would consider selecting an operating scenario that would accumulate funds available for acoustic easements, in a broader sense, mitigation, and also underwrite the cost of the facilitator based on the revenues from the turbines. Part of the scenario in the PowerPoint behind us also presumed, when it talked about special town meeting, that following consideration for a scenario that would generate those sufficient funds to make that feasible, discussing with town meeting whether there was a willingness based upon that anticipated operating revenue to advance funds to allow a facilitator to begin the acoustic easement and mitigation process. So that was the philosophy, the theory, underlying what we had brought forth to you and recognize that the board may determine you want to go in a different direction.
All right, so then essentially, and if I may, essentially, what we've done is say, "We're going to operate the turbines in a breakeven fashion. Therefore, we could go to town meeting, but obviously, town meeting will probably turn around and say, 'Well, there's nothing coming in on an ongoing basis. Therefore, we don't want to," as the town manager said, "advance any funds in order to make this happen." So.
But, Mr. Chairman, there's no mitigation for a facilitator to work with. I mean, we didn't vote to do any mitigation, so why would we hire a facilitator? Because we didn't provide any funding, and we didn't vote to do any mitigation with the neighbors in terms of sound acoustic easements or insulation or any of that. So I think that we should just table that until we have a better plan. I don't see any plan right now that's been on the table by this vote that would make sense to even hire a facilitator.
And I'll agree with Selectman Flynn, that my thoughts are, this board opted to mitigate -- our mitigation would be in the hours of operation versus financial mitigation. So I think all of the rest of these are viewpoints at this point.
I would just suggest that, while I understand what we've heard this evening, I think one of the things that we may want to consider is that the reality of the situation may set in with folks as time goes on. And maybe tonight, it is too early, as I said, to talk about a facilitator or other mitigation options. But I think we also need to keep in mind, and like I said, the state may turn around and say, "You folks are insane, because we've already said X, Y, Z, and again, we're not following what they've perhaps suggested." Given the current situation, given the fact that we're now curtailing our curtailment, for lack of a better term, and we're now going from 12 hours off to eight hours off, obviously, none of the neighbors this evening suggested that they want to come before us and ask for sound poofing for their home or buyout or any other such thing. But those -- that may change, and I think that we need to keep that in mind as we go forward here, which is why I wanted to see if the board wanted to proceed with any of these other options.
I don't think there isn't any reason to -- so there is no reason to continue any further after that vote.
All right.
I just want to be clear about that. I take that as a negative, that you're dissuaded of the vote. And just be aware, we are a board that has passed this three-to-two, and we should all act now like it passed five-to-zero. That is the way this board works. We no longer can hold on to our individual votes, but we, as a board, are committed to making the way we have voted as a group work.
And that is absolutely correct.
As I would have done if it had gone differently than what I would have wanted.
This board has always come together as a board when the vote is three-to-two, and I don't see that changing based on this vote.
I agree with you, Ms. Murphy.
We've always worked together. We always have.
All right, then, based on what I've heard, there's nothing further for us to do this evening. We've come to the end of our agenda. I would like to thank the audience and the folks who came this evening. We do appreciate your time, your feedback, and most importantly, it was very polite and very respectful, and I very much appreciate it. I didn't have to use the gavel once, and believe me, I do appreciate that more than you know.
Mr. Chairman, could I make one other comment, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Just a reminder that on previous vote by the board, you had indicated a willingness to have this town manager begin implementation in the month of October. So I will consider that to be continuing to be the directive from the board on this particular scenario. So we'll begin moving in that direction, and I thought it would be helpful just to acknowledge that as well.
Understood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Question for the town manager.
Quiet, please, folks, we're still conducting business.
Would it be helpful for you to have one of us join you in trying to negotiate with the state?
Folks, please, don't make me use the gavel now. Quiet down, please.
I'm happy to have one member of the board do that, whatever would be the desire of the board. We are in discussions, you know, as we speak. We've been in contact with the state on multiple occasions, going back to when the board had first directed that that be reinitiated. So I would be happy to honor the desire of the board in that regard.
With consideration, or?
Would Doug be interested in representing?
I think it may be something that we can -- we don't have to have as a vote as much as administrative team to figure out what's going to be our best plan of attack, which I almost see that's the way we have to do it with the state, that we are being very aggressive in what we're asking for.
Okay, thank you. Anything further on this topic?
I'm wondering whether the town manager wanted a definitive date. I would think that it is effective immediately that he can proceed at his will. So unless there's some other questions from the board, I know that that's the issue.
And maybe then we need to clarify this, because what he did ask was that we were looking at this and suggesting that whatever option we moved forward with, it would be effective in October, so October 1st. So at this point, are we saying we want to change that? Or do we want to?
If that's -- it's going to take some time to put that together, so I would make a motion that it's effective October 1st.
All right, so a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to make this decision effective October 1st. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Any further business or discussion on this topic?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion and a second to adjourn. We're adjourned. Thank you.
[music]